...of September 9th. I'll be all please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 We have Spanish translation.
Yes, we do. We have Esperanza Villegas with us tonight. Esperanza?
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Esperanza Villegas y esta noche estoy aquí para traducir. Si alguno de ustedes pregunta, me puede localizar en la parte trasera de esta sala. Gracias.
Gracias. And we have headsets for the hearing impaired as well. Announcements of closed session items. We have for B1 and B2, no reportable action. For B3, motion by Cordero, second by Harder, to reject the liability claim, and that passed 5-0. On B4, motion by Parker, second by Cordero, to approve the Casey waivers, and that passed 5-0. Acceptance of donations.
Move to approve with appreciation.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, it passes 5-0. Introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions.
Good evening. I do have a couple of introductions. First of all, I'd like Jesse Usaka to come forward. Jeff is from Dos Pueblos High School. I wanted to recognize Jeff for his selection as the CIF Southern Section Champion of Character. Jeff? And I have to ask Dan Choi and Dan Feldhouse if this isn't a big deal. This is a very big deal. Bum wheel, huh? According to CIF, Jeff was selected by the organization's Ethics and Sports Committee because he exemplifies the very finest in sportsmanship, character, integrity, and athletics. We understand that Jeff was selected from thousands of possible recipients in the CIF Southern Section. He will be honored at an October 23 CIF luncheon. Congratulations, Jeff, for modeling sportsmanship, character, and integrity to students and colleagues. Before Jeff leaves, I'd like the board to know that on September 26, Dos Pueblos will be holding its first-ever varsity football game. Well, actually, there will be two games this season. Dos Pueblos will go up against Lompoc High School, and then on October 3, their opponent will be Righetti High School. This soft opening of the renovated stadium will allow Dos Pueblos to work out bugs and kinks before a potential grand opening next fall, when they plan to formally dedicate the stadium to legendary athletic director Scott O'Leary. And at that time, then, we'll have all the games for Dos Pueblos, all the home games there at that stadium, including those in town that draw the biggest crowds. So congratulations, Jeff.
Thank you very much.
I'm bit... I'd also like to congratulate you. It's also my...I've had sons who are on soccer teams of yours, and I know your style very well and appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, good. I would like to also introduce board candidates who are in the audience. Let's see, I see Charlotte Ware. I see there's Susan Deacon. No Ed Heron?
Yes.
Oh, there's Ed Heron, sorry. And Kate Smith, and of course, Annette Cordero.
And Jacquelineinda is here.
Oh, Jacqueline.
Oh.
Hello. Good to have you with us. And finally, I'd like to introduce Grace Corcelius Wilson. Grace served the district's visually impaired students for 31 years until her retirement on June, on June 15 of this year. Grace would like to share poetry written by her late son Dylan Corcelius Wilson, who attended Roosevelt School, went on to Washington Elementary, went to La Colina, started the first two years at Santa Barbara High School, and then because of his band interests, went on to San Marcos High School. Sadly, Dylan died this summer in an auto accident. Grace, would you please come up to the microphone? Maybe it's better with the lights, huh?
Here it comes.
There's the boy.
Thank you for allowing me this moment to share my son with you. For 22 years, Dylan was a member of the Santa Barbara City Schools family, and as an infant and a preschooler, he attended after-school meetings with me, showed my attention with my students and their families, and often slept to the discordant melody of the Braille Rider as I prepared for the materials for the next day. When he actually became a student, he demonstrated his love for learning, especially reading, writing, and music. He grew into a fine young man, creative, wise, hardworking, joyful, inquisitive, and kind. Dylan's legacy is his validation through the way he lived his life of the great value of his generation. And it is especially important that I share Dylan with you in hopes that we never lose sight of why we teach and who we teach. Our students, our children, are our greatest gift, and if we nurture and respect them in the best and the most difficult of times, they will grow strong and proud. Anyone who was here two years ago might remember the "Yay Mom!", which punctured the quiet when I received my 30-year pin. So tonight, I would like to say, "Yay Dee!", as I present to you my son, the poet. Summer palette. Staring back at myself through the mirror, hanging off the yellow paint, soft light illuminates my face this morning. Faded flip-flops, worn t-shirt, a gold medallion loose upon my chest. Looking into my eyes, I see today's adventure. Running through the house, the wooden door softly closes behind me. Sun cheerful yellow, becketting the sky vibrant blue, far up and away the mountains. The Mustang peels around the corner, the oak leaf's playing with its fat tires. The cool red paint catches the shade. I smell warm leather and climb in. Sunlight blows in our hair as we roar up the canyon. We seek the treasure. We slide on synthetics as we roar up the canyon. We seek the treasure. We go, slantin', up we go, his crumpling back. Damp bodies, damp air, mystery in the woods. Asphalt crumbles away and we touch the earth, we touch the dust. We find the lush green, we find the song's dream, we find the rock goddess. Sandy handholds carved into her body, fineness climbing, she blows love from above. We echo in sandstone, we echo in time, we echo in seasons, we echo in rhyme. Free heart. Let's go try my new invention made of hardware store parts. Let's go try my new creation, my innovation of the heart. Not necessary to pedal or push, and of course, no need to drive. No required application of force. Simply reflect and it plots a course. Learn to love and it comes alive. The stronger your heart, the faster you fly. Of course, there aren't brakes. You belong in the sky. I'm telling you now, it won't stop when you start, so you better know yourself before you embark. It's isolation and the deep connection. A thousand mirrors in one direction. Up there in the sky, in the air and the wind, feel free to be free, feel free to transcend. There aren't any rules and there's no place to park, no place to refuel, it's only your heart. And in closing, my son, the glider. For the stiff glider, he has no purpose but the will of wind and follows ends of breath and sky. He pushes up naked but is not driven, floating, falling, diving, drowning, with frozen form, snow foam, and sterile. The sky fills him. I am this glider with no shoes on, on the roof with the breeze, on the roof with the sun, warm. Thank you.
That was a beautiful tribute to Dylan. Shall I go on with the superintendent's report? While all of our schools are up and running, for the first 10 days of school, we collect enrollment information on a daily basis. As of Monday, September 8, the elementary district, including charter schools, had 5,834 students. As a comparison, last year's SEBETS had an enrollment of 5,640. This is almost 200 more than we had last year. So elementary enrollment is up. We had anticipated it being up. Of course, we had anticipated that before we opened the homeschool, so it's up even more than what we had anticipated. The 803 kindergarten students is actually lower than last year's SEBETS count by just 25 students, but at 800 students, it's very stable, and we certainly have more students in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade than we have in fifth grade and sixth grade. So we expect elementary enrollment to continue to go up. In the secondary district, we had 9,811 students. Last year's SEBETS was 10,198, which is a difference of 387 students, which, this is an enrollment drop that is very close to what we had anticipated. So we are seeing the enrollment decrease in the secondary district, and we expect that to continue for a couple of years. The California Department of Education has informed us that both the Santa Barbara Elementary and the high school districts have been awarded five-year approvals for our gifted and talented education grant applications. Those were approved by the board at a recent meeting, well, earlier this summer, June, just seems like yesterday. It is rare to receive more than a three-year approval. Five years. Congratulations to Robin Sowoski and Gate. My office regularly issues a report to the board called the Board Brief. This is a collection of reports and articles on school and district matters. A copy is on display in the reception area and can be provided through the superintendent's office. I'd like to highlight just one item from the August 28 Board Brief. The board saw a description of the advanced leadership training for principals that will be undertaken this year. It's not only for principals, it's also for assistant principals and some lead teachers who are interested in becoming administrators. Standards-aligned instructional leadership is based on best practices from educational research for increasing student achievement. As you probably recall from an earlier board meeting, our school and district staff stepped up to the plate regarding the gap fire, making our sites available to house firefighters and serve as a Red Cross shelter. We again have a role in supporting the community because on September 11 at 6 o'clock, the county will hold a post-fire community meeting at San Marcos High School. The forum will take place in the school's auditorium, and the topic will be the county's efforts to handle dirt and muddy debris expected to flow down the slopes of the San Inez Mountains this winter and into the city of Galita and other areas. The forum will be hosted by supervisors Janet Wolf and Brooks Firestone. Numerous county departments, the Red Cross, FEMA, the U.S. Forest Service, and other agencies will be competing. And we have a joint meeting with the city this Friday, starting at 1:30. It will take place at the David Gebhardt Meeting Room in the Santa Barbara City Public Works Office. Finally, we have a student report from Greg Kross, who is the ASB representative of Dos Pueblos High School. Greg?
I think it's Mr. Cruz.
Cruz. I'm so sorry.
Good. It's Cruz. Good evening, everybody. I'm the ASB representative of Dos Pueblos High School, and pretty much for the last three or four weeks, the ASB representative, along with everybody else in the leadership group, has been helping out for the school, Dos Pueblos High School, to make sure the last three to four weeks have been just running smoothly as possible. Charger check-in was on the Wednesday before school had started. It was the process where sophomores, juniors, and seniors all gathered together at Dos Pueblos High School to make sure that they all know their schedules beforehand. A new rule other than the fact that students could not handpick their schedules was that library debts now had to be repaid in order to get their schedules. Many people did not get their schedules on that day, but more often than not, many students were able to pay off their debts, and DP were given a large amount of debts that would not ordinarily be paid until about June of next year. Freshman orientation was the Friday before school. I think it was a more lax environment. We had barbecue, we were grilling hamburgers, hot dogs, there was music playing for three to four hours. We have over 640 freshmen coming into Dos Pueblos High School this year. We gathered them all in together in the Sauvignon Gym, and we rehearsed for them, the leadership group rehearsed for them, four different skits, one of which was a drugs and alcohol skit, another was the first day of school, one of which was rules and regulation, and finally we had a buy-your-ASB and charger card. I think the process was well, was well put together. It lasted about half the day, and overall, I think it was a great start for the class of 2013 at Dos Pueblos High School. The first major assignment that the leadership group was given to us on the first day of school was to make sure that traffic congestion at Dos Pueblos High School would be ultimately stopped, or at least made sure that we have a better policy than we did last year. We have over 2,400 people go into Dos Pueblos High School this year, which means that the traffic congestion could be, could potentially be pretty bad if we don't have people lining up and making sure that we have everybody working as efficiently as possible. The leadership group stepped up for the first nine days of school, the first two weeks, and made sure that the new implemented policies, such as our Main Street Alameda be not, parents cannot park on that street to drop off their kids. We made sure that those policies were enforced. We had two shifts each, one at 7:20, one 2:30, and now I think traffic is running as smoothly as possible. Back-to-school night was the Thursday, last Thursday. It ran from about 4 to 9. I think it was a great, I think it was a great event for parents and teachers alike. I think the parents got to know what their kids are learning, and I think it was run very smoothly by the leadership group. Recycling. Recycling is done every Tuesdays and Thursdays at Dos Pueblos High School. It's not one of the most enjoyable things to do, but I think it's one of those things that has to be done. I think it's, it's very run, it's run very efficiently. I think it's one of those things that it just makes the school go around. It really helps out Dos Pueblos High School when the leadership group steps up like this. For upcoming events, the United Day of Caring is September 20 for Dos Pueblos High School. We have the DP blood drive on November 20. I know the leadership group will be helping out with that. Tomorrow, the leadership group is wearing their polo rugby's in order to show that the Channel League meeting, in which all ASB, oh, excuse me, all representatives of every single high school will come together at Dos Pueblos High School to promote sportsmanship, to show that even though we might have different mascots and different team names, I think that we all share the same ideals when it comes to sports. And finally, we have the Safety Committee, which is three of our commissioners, and it's another one of those things at Dos Pueblos that makes, that just makes Dos Pueblos go around. It's headed by Alex Kim. Let's see, headed by Alex Kim. I can't remember the other two right now. Excuse me. But other than that, it's a really important thing. It just helps out the general safety idea of Dos Pueblos High School, and they meet every two weeks. And that's about it.
Thank you, Greg. Your last name again?
Cruz.
Cruz.
It's pronounced like shoes. Oh, yes.
Got it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And that's it for the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Do we have public comments?
Yes, we do. Have two speaker slips. The first is Kate Smith. You have three minutes, and I'll give you a 30-second warning.
My name is Kate Smith, and I'm running for the school board. I got a questionnaire today from the Santa Barbara Teachers Association, and the first question is, "Why are you running?", and I wanted to answer that. Our schools are in crisis, and our country is at a crossroads. Education is the only industry in the United States that elects laypeople to an oversight board for a profession. I'm a credentialed high school teacher. I know the educational philosophy from Aristotle to John Dewey to Howard Gardner. It is not arbitrary, and here is my platform. Student success in quality schools. Democratic education is engaged, relevant, and socially conscious curriculum in a cooperative and supportive environment with a tolerance for diversity, an accommodation for diverse learning styles, and a fair distribution of funds. I'm running to support teachers and to empower teachers. I'm running to support the parents' voice. I stand with the parents of low-performing or undiagnosed special needs children who are thrown into jail schools instead of served by the schools. I'm running for administrative reduction. With all due respect, the board and all the administrators could disappear, and the schools would continue. The bell would ring, and the class would go on. I'm running to expose Machiavellian mechanisms and corruption in the Santa Barbara School District, the Special Education Local Plan Area, which is the SELPA.
30 seconds?
And to expose the County Office of Education. They have been in collusion with the district attorney, the police, probation officers to criminalize our students. I'm running so that the community works together with our schools to create the schools our children need and deserve for the 21st century. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, it's Ellie Iverson and Julie Friedman.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Julie Friedman.
And I'm Ellie Iverson.
And we're your Youth Council representatives. We work on the Santa Barbara School District Subcommittee, and we just would like to introduce ourselves as the new members.
Yeah, we'll be coming to meetings as much as possible in order to be the link between Youth Council and the Santa Barbara School Board. Thank you.
Thanks.
Glad you came today. Thank you. Thank you. We're on to the consent agenda. I have a few changes here. On D3, you'll notice the attachment is on our desk behind, sitting here. Notice that. For, let's see, D9 was pulled for this evening, so we're not going to vote on that one. And D1, you'll also know some changes to the first minutes, particularly, let's see, there was a typo on the first page, and then on a change on F2. On the first minutes. On the minutes, actually, I'd like to divide them up a little bit because we, there's, I think some of them were not all here, so... But, first of all, does anyone want to pull anything before I...
I'm sorry.
Sorry. Oh. Do you want to know what my correction, the correction was? Is that what it was?
Did you say F2?
On the first, the meeting of May 13.
Correct.
If you go a couple pages back, F2, I asked Mr. Smith to clarify that sentence there, and he did. There was something missing from it, I think. Not a very big change. It was more of a clarification. There was also a typo on the front page. It said 2008 two times. So, small changes.
Okay.
So do I, if there isn't anyone to pull anything, you want to pull something? Yes.
Two, D2, D5, D7. I appreciate that. I'm pulled.
Two, five, and seven. Okay.
Ms. Cordero?
Yeah, D15 and 16.
Move to approve with the exception of the items that have been pulled.
Second.
Except for the last minutes, we'll do separately.
Which one are we... I'm not clear because, okay, there was just one, it was the...
Yeah, it was just, no, it's not the last...
The July 10th minutes.
Yes. So everything but the July 10th minutes.
That's fine. I accept.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yep, that passes 5-0.
Move to approve the July 10th minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And Dr. Noel, you're abstaining. So it passes...
You were absent.
You were absent. So it was 4-0 with one abstention. Then we'll come back to those that were pulled later in this evening. Now we move on to E1. The follow-up to the proposal to hire gang intervention specialists and approval of a pilot program to hire two outreach workers.
Michael Gonzalez, our Director of Student Services and Compliance, who will make this presentation. I need to reiterate a couple of things that I said at our last meeting. One is that we do not believe we're close enough to gang activity in this community. As you know, the violence that has led to the deaths of youth in our city has been off of our school campuses. We're concerned that it will spill over onto the school campuses, and we're concerned for the safety of our students. Secondly, there's been an ongoing process as a community collaborative that have involved, well, some of the people right here in this room. We'll be reporting much more on it at our meeting this Friday, which is the joint meeting with city council. And this is, this is really an early proposal as part of that long-term collaborative strategy. And the reason for the timing is simply that school is starting. We're concerned about having people in place to work with kids to stem the violence, and we think the time is now rather than to continue to discuss it. We listened carefully to what you had to say. We believe we've scaled this back to what we absolutely must do. We believe that the county will also provide an intervention specialist or a community liaison that will serve the El Puente population, and that would bring us up to three people for starters. But we do think that it's only a starting point, and it will grow into something larger as part of the community process. Mr. Gonzalez?
Dr. Sarvis, thank you very much, members of the board. I want to share with you that this... I want to share with you that this is part of a larger context. We're going to put up on the screen right now a diagram that was released yesterday at the South Coast Gang Task Force that I believe that you folks have received a preliminary copy. This is the proposed structure for the city's gang efforts throughout the South Coast. Modeling, or based on the models developed by the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention, which is a department of the U.S. Department of Justice, this is the kind of organizational structure that's being proposed by the city. You can see at the very, very top, there's a group called the policymakers and chief executives. In the center is an executive director or coordinator. To your left, you're going to find client service program operators, and to the right, you're going to find, at the cornerstone, gang program specialist. And that's what we're going to focus on this evening. You asked that we bring back a pilot program, and that's the intent of this presentation. Using the wording that the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention in their models, we've decided that perhaps a more appropriate name for these worker are outreach workers. You will see that the city continues to call these folks gang program specialists. You know that we've called them gang intervention and prevention specialists. Probably, the term outreach worker more very clearly identifies the work at hand. I'm referring to the cover memo labeled E1. Program goals. You folks asked for a more thorough description of the program goals. Let me share with you that very first comment, the very first bullet, that part of our intention is to continue the case management that took place this summer with 82 identified high-risk youth who were either very active gang members or very close, associated with gang members. This program proved very successful, and we'll summarize that in just a few minutes. But essentially, we've got 82 youths who were involved in case management for high-risk behaviors. Over half of those 82 youngsters are presently in the Santa Barbara School District, and our intent is to provide them with follow-up services. The next bullet talks about one of the functions for these outreach workers is to identify appropriate clients and recruit them for the network of city and agency services, including the City of Santa Barbara's gang prevention program. As you may know, that program is still being planned and put together. We expect that a comprehensive plan will be produced very shortly. I suspect that at this Friday's joint City Council Board of Education meeting, we'll hear further updates. Another goal for this program is to identify the needs and goals of gang members or students at risk of gang involvement and develop a more comprehensive intervention plan. Another one, provide role modeling and mentoring for gang-involved youth. Another aspect, coordinate appropriate crisis response to program clients following violent episodes in the community. Also, providing assistance to families in distress, ranging from accessing basic needs to helping families resolve conflicts. Visiting clients who are incarcerated and help them to reconnect to the services as they are released from custody. Resolving conflicts and mediating conflicts between clients, families, other youth, and agencies. Acting as a liaison between client programs and service providers and schools. Working with clients who are seeking employment. Working with parents of school-aged gang members who are resistive to intervention so that parents will have a resource to deal with their children. Accessing a network of community organizations and services. And finally, conducting gang awareness presentations in schools. A board member raised a very important issue in terms of the hiring process for gang members. You quoted from a best practice document that cautioned about the employment of gang members as outreach workers. If you recall carefully a reading of those best practices, that's not exactly what it said. What it did say is that if we're going to hire individuals with a gang background, we've got to make sure that their associations with gang backgrounds have been broken. I think the term that they use is we need to vet their applications with law enforcement to make sure that their previous gang relationships have been broken and that they can work very cooperatively with law enforcement. The operational structure, there was a lot of discussion at a previous board meeting about the operational structure and coordination, and you outlined, again, referring to that best practices article from the Department of Justice. I would like you to know that the city's task force is in the process of very closely following that, the best practice models that the Department of Justice has outlined in that document that we've all had a chance to read. Evaluation. The evaluation component for this program is going to be undertaking, is going to be undertaken by the city's gang task force. I have simply shared that there are probably at least four issues that we're going to take a look at in evaluating any program involved with these. To address the gang violence issue, one of the evaluation components will be taking a look at the number of stabbings that occur in the city and its immediate neighborhoods, looking for a reduction of gang-related fights in schools, looking for a reduction in the number of youths at risk of gang involvement or involved in gang involvement. Or rather, let me be more clear. Very clearly, we all understand that we need to increase the participation of at-risk youth and gang members in very positive, productive activities in our community. That will be one of the measures that we're going to be taking a look at. How many of our youngsters are participating in the activities that are being put together and planned? And very critical for schools and for our community is the number of youth violence events we have advanced knowledge of. I've shared with members of the board before that as I speak with our law enforcement partners and probation, as well as our system principals, we do not have an early warning system for events. And we believe that if we can put together a team, in this case, two folks who begin to work with gang members or kids who are at risk of gang involvement, that we'll be able to intervene before these violent episodes take place. Under financial considerations, one of the things you asked me to look is the discrepancy between the salary of a beginning teacher and the salary that we're proposing for this position. I need you to know that this is not a change that I can arbitrarily make. We are, however, at your direction, going to sit down with the CSCA and negotiate what you've asked me to negotiate. I will share with you that the total compensation for each of these positions, including salary and benefits, is right now approximately $66,000. I do need you to know that a beginning teacher, right now, salary-wise, I believe, makes about $43,000, $44,000. The salary range for this position is about $48,000. And again, we will take your direction and sit down with the CSCA. Fiscal impact, we have, thank you to Eric and Robin. We have concluded that we do currently have funds from the pupil retention grant, carryover funds, that can be used to support this program at this time at no additional cost to the general fund. We are, of course, recommending, as Dr. Sarvis has shared with you, that there is an urgency for these positions. I, as the staff member assigned to safety for our district, I would be remiss if I did not lend my strong recommendation that we proceed with these two positions. We have a group of kids who are involved in gangs, who currently are not being reached by our schools, and we need to do that. In addition, we need to begin to work with their parents. Thank you. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Board members, questions? Sure, lots. My first question has to do with the training component. On the paper, the best practices paper that you referred to in your comments and also in some sections of the attachments, on page 22, it talks about the kind of intensive professional development that anyone hired would need. And specifically, it talks about the people who would be hired for the job probably have highly-developed interpersonal skills, but they may not have the administrative skills that they would need to support the position. How many student contacts? How many family contacts? You know, all those kinds of pieces that you need to have in place to run a really effective program. So I guess my question is, what kind of training program are we prepared to provide?
Again, the delivery of that program is actually a function of the task force. One of the, I'm going to show you a page that was released yesterday from the South Coast Gang Task Force, and it speaks to what they call the youth gang specialist team, or what we're currently calling outreach workers. And I would like you to scroll all the way down to the bottom under organizational assignment. And that's the best answer I can provide, board members, at the present time. Gang specialists will be employed by the respective school districts, but receive a coordinated training and briefings to ensure consistent strategy and approach. In conjunction with intervention suppression team, they'll work together to develop measurement tools to monitor program effectiveness. You will know that, I believe, that Chief Sanchez will, as asked, to speak on behalf of this issue in a few minutes. You will note that the Santa Barbara Police Department is going to provide training, the Santa Barbara Sheriff's Department is going to provide training, the district attorney's office, and the probation department is going to provide training. In addition, we, Mental Health Services, are part of the collaborative working in this issue, and they are going to provide training. In addition, for the last few weeks, we've been meeting with a number of gang specialists. We met with one this afternoon, who's a professor down in Palomar Community College down in San Diego, who is going to be taking a sabbatical soon and has made his services available. In addition, our own backyard, Michael Furlong, who could not be here with us tonight, is prepared to begin to provide services in the area of training for these outreach workers, as well as Professor Victor Rios, who's associated with the UCSB Department of Sociology with a extensive background in working with gangs. So this is a partial list of the people who are going to be providing the training for these individuals.
Thank you. That was pretty comprehensive. On a more pedestrian level, what kind of training is the school district going to be offering these people? Are they going to learn how to use ARES? You know, all those kinds of things that they can track attendance, those kinds of very nuts and bolts student issues.
As, yes, the district will provide that training, and as you folks know, we have got that training down fairly pat. We're able, in a very short amount of time, to provide anyone with instruction on how to use the administrative packages. In addition, the training has to do, what I didn't mention is, is that what these individuals also have to be trained in is, how do you work with principals? How do you work with counselors? How do you work with teachers? How do you work with community agencies? And so these are all issues that we're addressing. I want you to know that what I've not explained clearly up till now is that, again, we funded one person, an employee of the Santa Barbara School Districts, to work in a summer program that took a case management approach with the 82 students. All of those issues related to training were very much in demand this summer, and we took several workers who did not have any previous experience with administrative packages, reading transcripts, reading attendance histories, interacting with summer school officials, as well as referrals to public and private entities, and yet, we successfully piloted that program this summer. So we have an experiential base and background as we proceed with this model.
Okay. Do you want to, go ahead.
I wanted to ask if you have a customary people in your business write plans for these kinds of things. Do you have a training plan? And is there a budget for it?
The, those documents are, again, a function of the city-led gang task force, and those...
I'm talking about Mrs. Harder's question about our training, not their training.
It will, as soon as the board approves our recommendation for the hiring of these two people, we will begin to put those documents together. Again, I've shared with you that the funding at this time no longer represents an issue. We have the categorical funds to support the training program.
Well, that actually was my next question, was, we have the money for this year only. It's carryover funds from the pupil retention block grant. So I guess I would like to set in motion plans to, if we move forward with this, for future funding. I don't want to fund it with carryover categorical funds this year and then stall in the spring because we can't identify funding for the fall.
I agree with you. You will hear on Friday, I suspect, that what the city is looking for, what we're all looking for, is a five-year commitment to this kind of plan. And you're absolutely correct. We will need to sit down and look at our budgets and see, how can we commit to a five-year plan for this program?
Okay. And then another question. You are the administrator that they would be answering to. You would be their boss, if you will?
Well, let me answer that in a couple of different ways. As you know, I very clearly stated that anyone working in schools should be, first of all, responsible to the principals, and I completely agree with that. But yes, I would also be coordinating their services. And as we approach the reality of the South Coast Gang Task Force and their plans, there is currently a plan that perhaps that executive director will become a vital partner in the supervision of these outreach workers.
I appreciate all of the agencies that need to participate in moving forward with this effort, but I don't want a new hire to be confused about who they would go to with a problem, or who would ultimately be evaluating them with so many partners involved.
We are also not looking for any kind of adding complexity to a very complex situation we have at hand. Thank you.
Okay. And then a couple of other additional pieces. Dr. Noel had shared with me, I don't know, maybe with others, the school gang prevention safe passage program, and it lays out an entire program that would be part of a comprehensive plan. It's not a plan in and of itself. But one of the things that they do in terms of establishing a safe passage plan is they work with the local transportation agency to assess travel patterns and other problem areas. areas. And I don't know that we've, we may have done this in part, I don't know that we've done a comprehensive look at where students are crossing paths after school and problem areas are. I'm sure that there are probably incident reports from the police department regarding that, but I'm not sure that we've ever seen anything like that.
You are right. We have not undertaken a as comprehensive study as, for example, El Puente has, who with the cooperation of MTD did modify existing schedules to help after-school bus transportation. We will be taking a look at that.
And then, and then one other request by way of moving forward. As a board, we see expulsions. After they've been to the administrative hearing panel, they need to be reviewed by the board. But until something reaches the expulsion level, we aren't necessarily seeing it. So I'm wondering if we can start to get reports on gang-related activity. I mean, if there's a fight on campus, we may see one expulsion related to it, or there may be only suspensions related to it. If there are only suspensions, we never, we don't necessarily hear anything about it. If we could start to get reports on gang-related activity, whether it's tagging, whether it's a fight, I think it would be extremely helpful.
Thank you. We will begin to implement that.
Can I just ask a quick question here? Has it been determined which sites these two outreach workers will be at?
The original proposal very clearly outlined which sites. We have now taken the position that with two outreach workers, we will work in general with east-side schools and west-side schools. If you look at it that way, we're talking about the immediate concerns. They continue to be the neighborhoods surrounding Santa Barbara Junior High, Santa Barbara High School. But if you've attended any community meetings at Franklin School, you know that that store right across from the Franklin Community Center is an attractive nuisance, a place that attracts gangs. We'll be working in those areas. On the west side, very clearly, we'll be working on the west side communities. That does include the neighborhoods that feed into La Cumbra, that feed into Harding. And as you know, the bulk of the students end up at San Marcos High School, and we'll be working with the folks over there. Now, please remember that this simply begins to augment other outreach workers that are working in other neighborhoods. This is our first take at working in those schools and those neighborhoods.
I think in fairness to that store on Montecito Street, they also have the Best Buy on Spanish saffron in town.
I didn't know that. Thank you.
And a very nice family. I have to include La Colina in that on the west side.
That means, then, that they're working with several different principals. It's not just-
Correct.
So actually, they have several different supervisors in that case.
Correct. The criticalness of knowing how to work with school officials.
Ms. Cordero, you wanted to?
Well, I also, I think we have a couple of people in here from the task force who may want to speak to this as well, and I was-
Questions, then.
Yeah. I was, but I know what I'm saying is, some of the comments, we may want to, I may have more questions after we hear from other people. But I was at the meeting yesterday where a lot of this was discussed, and I think in some ways, I wish that we were having this meeting after our Friday meeting, after our discussion with the city council, because I think the, understanding the whole plan would be helpful in understanding what our role in that plan would be. But I was wondering, at the meeting yesterday, there was a question, there was a suggestion made, that perhaps the district could designate the funds, but contract with other existing agencies. And a lot of, a lot of discuss, there was a lot of discussion yesterday about not reinventing the wheel. And I'm wondering, for example, I think El Puente contracts with Los Compadres to come in and do some of their, the work with their students. And I'm wondering if we've examined that possibility, because I know that some of the other agencies are, have a strong background in case, in case study, or case history management. They are in a position to maybe be able to do some of the training, that we don't necessarily have the expertise that would take, I think, take some work on our part to get up and running to be able to provide that level of training. And also, they may be in a position where they could stretch our dollars farther than we can stretch them. So I'm wondering if we have pursued that or investigated that at all.
We are in the process of pursuing that. Just to clarify for members of the board, actually, the Center for Community Education, which is a division of the Santa Barbara County Education Office, has sent to the South Coast Gang Task Force a suggestion, a proposal, that does much of what you're outlining. They have suggested that we take a look, that all the partners take a look at contracting with the agencies that currently are at the forefront of working with gang members. For example, you've heard the name, the title of the group All For One. Matt Sanchez is here tonight representing All For One, as well as Los Compadres, which is a program of the Community Action Commission. We have scheduled a meeting with Ben Romo and Fred Rasso to sit down and look at that proposal. I will share with you that the Gang Task Force still believes, the South Coast Gang Task Force still believes that these outreach workers, as outlined in the document up on the screen, is still an important aspect of the city's intervention efforts in the area of youth violence.
But, but is it correct that, that some of the, or maybe even many, I don't know, of the task force members would agree that, that they don't necessarily have to be sort of supervised by the district? That they could be contracted through other agencies?
In the model that Ben Romo is suggesting, you're correct. It would be something like memorandum of understanding with All For One or Los Compadres instead of one of the proposals, instead of hiring gang specialists, that we would contract with those agencies, provide them additional funds so that they could hire additional staff in their programs to work with these youngsters. Again, we have, we've already met with Ben and Fred once to discuss this issue, and we're going to be meeting very shortly to continue those discussions.
So part of my question would then be, if we were to approve this tonight, would we be precluding those discussions? Or would, would there still be a possibility of changing the way that we are proceeding with this in light of the discussions that you have with them?
Maybe, maybe I should jump into this. We believe that the selection of those people is very important, and the supervision, or at least joint supervision of those people, having some supervisory authority over those people is very important. And for that reason, it would, it would take quite a bit to convince us that we could just contract that out and just send in the person to handle the east side and the person to handle the west side. We really do think that we need these people to come from within the district and in our own selection process. So right now, our thinking is that we need to get these people hired. This might evolve into something different. I mean, we might have an overall structure and the long-term strategy that does have a number of outreach people that could be considered a, an agency, or could be considered a community task force, and maybe we would roll whatever resources we put into this into that task force. But at this point in time, we're looking at hiring two people.
Okay. Let me just reiterate why that was sounding a bit attractive to me, because I really support these positions. I think they're incredibly important to our, our schools and our efforts to address this issue. The, part of the reason it was sounding attractive to me was the issue of training, where I think we might have to gain some additional expertise before we could train these people.
In fact, we-
And much of that expertise already exists in the community that we could, that we could work with. And also, again, the possibility that other agencies would be able to stretch our dollars in terms of being able to do a little bit more with them than we can under the, you know, in the situation that we have.
Well, we're, we're not aware of any ag, I mean, we, we have some groups, some organizations that are very effective in working with well-known gang members and the hardcore gang members. We're especially interested in reaching our junior high students who are gang-prone or who find that attractive, and we don't know of agencies and groups that are, are very effective in that right now. Just as an example, in the, in the stabbings and murders that we've had, no one, to my knowledge, had any heads up about any of those, which says that we don't have people working closely enough with that population.
Well, I, I understand that. One of the, one of the statements that was made yesterday repeatedly is that there are some organizations in the community that, for, for whatever reason, maybe because of how they were, you know, established or whatever, seem to be more effective than others, maybe just because of their structure or whatever. And so that's, I want, basically, what I'm shooting for is just to make sure that we have, that we're doing this with the best possible chance for success, whatever that means, whether it means we do it, whether it means we contract with somebody else, but that we're doing it in the way that's the most likely to give us a successful outcome.
I agree totally. And it's for that reason that, that we're also seeing this as part of the collabor, community collaborative and comprehensive model, because we have some, well, we have some favored organizations in town. I mean, we think All For One, and Los Compadres, and some of those organizations are doing a great job, and we would be drawing on their expertise as part of this community model.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Because we need to go on to the public comment, if we can.
I'd like to comment, but I would like to hear our speakers first.
Okay. Let's do that.
All right. We have a number of speakers, but I think that we can continue to keep it at three minutes. And I'll call three names so that you're prepared. First up is Chief Cam Sanchez, followed by Shereen Catapooch, followed by Elena Marie. Three minutes, and I'll give you a 30-second warning.
Chiefs don't talk for three minutes, but man, I'll try.
It says here, short comments.
I did put that on there. Hi. My name is Cam Sanchez, and I'm part-time chief, and the other half, I'm the assistant principal at Harding School. In all seriousness, I need your help. I need your help tonight. I need you to make this happen. The training will happen, but it's all about relationships, especially with families, because that's where it starts. So I need your help. I really do. I'm asking you for your help tonight. There are a lot of people in this community doing great things for kids, and their hearts are in the right place. I think it would be a wonderful message to send, to have the school district not just think about contracting, but taking the lead in hiring people that represent the school district. What a great message, because at the end of the day, what we've been working with all summer with 82 young people is for them to get back to school, do positive things, but the number one thing is to get them through school and to get their families more engaged with their school principals. There are three issues. There's suppression, which is what we do on the police department, intervention and prevention, we also do that. But you can't have intervention and prevention unless you have a very strong suppression, and that's where we come in. But we equally care about our children in terms of the prevention and intervention, especially with families. So I need your help in this area, and I hope you could see it. And I'll be brief, and I'll end with a story. During the summer, by the way, the 82, before I give you the story, the 82 young people were sponsored or checked up on, whatever you want to call it, followed through the whole summer by a bunch of folks doing other jobs with the county schools, with my police department, with All For One, Los Compadres. They did not set aside what they're already doing to do the 82 young people. They added that chore at no cost to anybody. Those 82 are going to be continually followed and monitored by those same people, again, for no extra funds. So we're talking about the young people that were not worked on this summer, which are probably about 100 more. That's why I need your help tonight. During the summer, myself and several others visited some young people at Los Prietos Boys Camp, and we went up there because we knew that they were going to get out and come back to our community, and we wanted to make sure that they had something to come back to.
And here's your 30-second warning.
And in that, in the meeting, we spoke to these young people. Some, there were 10 young men, all Santa Barbara kids. Five told, told us they weren't interested, they wanted to be gangsters, they wanted to continue to live that lifestyle, thank you very much. And five listened to us. So I'll end with a quick story. It's going to take me 30, 40 seconds. But the young man that I'm talking about said to me that he'd been a gang member since he was 11. And I asked him, he looked at me and he said, "I know who you are, and before you ask me any questions, I need to ask you one." And I said, "Sure." He said, "You're the chief of police, right?" And I said, "Yes." He says, "What's an important man like you wasting your time on a loser like me?" And two hours later, after I spoke to him, I guaranteed him, and he really felt that he was not a loser. And a lot of us did this. It's not something special that I did. We all, we all visited these young men. And I asked him, "What do you think about when you go to bed at night?" He said, "Two things." And then he burst out crying. He said, "I think about my mom. I broke her heart. I'm her only child, and I'm a gang member. I broke her heart. I need to fix that." I said, "What else do you think about?" He said, "I think about all those guys that I thought were my friends. I'm here by myself for a year at Los Prietos. I'll be 18 next week, and I know if I continue screwing up, I'm not coming back to little kid jail." He says, "What can you do for me, chief?" That's just a small part of that story. We got him a job. He worked all summer. He graduated from Los Robles High School. Hardcore. I'm not talking about a, I'm talking about a very involved young man. Anyway, at the end, I said, "How about your dad?" He said, "My dad left when I was two." I said, "Did your mother ever remarry?" "Oh, yeah. She married a guy when I was in the sixth grade, and I didn't like it, because I wanted to be the only man in the house, because I knew my father left us." And I said, "What do you think of your stepdad?" "Well, I didn't like him for a long time, because he had, he had some harsh rules, and I figured he wasn't my real dad, so I didn't have to follow them. That's why I'm here today." And I said, "How do you feel about your stepdad?" And now he says, "I love him with all my heart." I said, "Why is that, mijo?" He said, "Because he's the only man that visits me. I need your help tonight. We need to bring these people on board so that we can reach out to families and do something about this issue, because it is, is an issue." The police department, the city of Santa Barbara, has a great relationship with, with this board, with this superintendent and his staff, and I'm proud to say that we're friends. And it doesn't matter who gets the credit, who does the training, it matters how we outreach to these families, to these children, and make sure that we give them an opportunity. We can't save them all, but I think all of us in this room are obligated to save all we can. So I need your help tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any question, do I take questions?
You do not.
Actually, you raised a question that I have for the superintendent, because you raised probably the most critical point, and that's working with the students and their families. What percentage of time do we picture these people working school day versus after-school hours and evening?
Well, we've talked about that quite a bit. At one point, we were thinking 60% in school, 40%, and other point in times, we were thinking 50/50. There are some times that we've talked about 30% in school and 70% working into the evenings, because it really is someone who needs to make contact and work with the family, connect the family to resources, connect the family to the various community agencies and what the rest of the community has to offer as well. So we're not quite settled on that, but-
I think part of the issue is like anything else. I think what we've not done is- I think what we've not done is solidified a plan. We've tried to come up with this grandiose strategy, but I really believe it's going to have to be down further, and I think it's going to depend on the child. I don't think we're going to be able to say, "No matter what you do, it's seventy and thirty, fifty-fifty." I really think that we're going to have to really select some organization, people to these duties that will not teach the lesson, but teach the child. And each, I think each child will be different, and I think that's what we need to think
All right.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for coming in today. Shereen Catapush, followed by Elena Marie, followed by Eduardo Que.
Good evening. I'm here representing both Fighting Back, the Community Collaborative, and the Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse. We have been part of the Strategy Planning Committee or the South Coast Youth Violence Task Force. We, really meaning Penny, she sat on the Core Leadership Council. And we are absolutely in support of the community's efforts to do something, to intervene and prevent and suppress gang violence. In fact, one of our folks who was working at La Cuesta was one of the case managers this summer, anyway. Yesterday, at this meeting, there was a lot of support for the kind of collaboration and communication that's happened as a result of this committee, and people really coming together. So I think it's a proud time for the community, because we are all coming together. You saw in the model that Michael showed you that what's being proposed in terms of moving forward, and there was a lot of discussion about the short-term strategy and the long-term strategy, what's being proposed is really based on both using existing resources and having these new staff. And so, given that we're a large part of the existing resources and partnerships in the community, I would just ask that as we move forward and think about this five-year plan, that we are mindful of the existing programs and communities and the resources like YSS, Teen Court, Community Action Commission, because these are challenging times, you know, with funding, you know, with the YSSs, we've just gone down from two to one. We have a lot of programs and services in the community that are under duress and struggling for funding. And I just want to make sure that we have both those supports, that our existing programs are there, and we have the new resources to utilize. I know the grand jury report indicated that the services of Fighting Back are really critical, we of course agree with that, and that the funding is in jeopardy. These fifty-two of the eighty-two students that were worked with this summer, Fred Razzo has already asked our YSSs to follow up and work with them, we are happy to do that. We're happy to do everything we can, whether it's through Teen Court, Daniel Bryant, our YSSs on campus. And so I just ask you to be mindful of that, I know you're being really thoughtful about it, and I appreciate that. And as you brought up, Ms. Cordero, for the cost of two of these positions, for a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, you get five, four, five youth service specialists on your campus. And, you know, if we had unlimited money, we'd do it all, I know. So, anyway, just appreciate your partnership and the thoughtfulness about how to balance what we've got with what we really need. Thank you.
Thank you. Elena Marie, followed by Eduardo Que, followed by, sorry, Jaclyn Inda.
Good evening, it's a pleasure to be with you all tonight. My name is Elena Marie, I'm the program manager with Just Communities Central Coast, and we've had the honor of working closely with the school district over the last few years on issues of equity and inclusion, most centrally with our Institute for Equity and Education. And I'm here tonight because we strongly support the hiring of outreach workers to, as part of a larger strategy, and to supplement the great things that are happening in our school site and with community organizations like Fighting Back, to add to a strategy to address issues of gang violence. I'm glad that the title has been changed to Youth Outreach Workers. I think that really clearly reflects what could be the really positive impact of these folks in terms of reaching out and helping build school connectedness with students that are most at risk for being, becoming involved with gangs. We know that one of the root causes that a lot of young people are attracted to joining gangs is because they're seeking this sense of belonging, a sense of connectedness, relationships with, which Chief Sanchez alluded to or talked about also, as well as a sense of empowerment. And unfortunately, for some young folks in our community, they're finding that sense of connectedness and empowerment in gangs more than they are in our schools. So when that sense of connectedness is so critical, a wide variety of research shows that that's one of the most important elements, not only in reducing the risk in preventing gang violence in terms of social health, but also in closing the academic achievement gap and working for the academic success of all our students. And when students are asked about what helps them feel connected to their school, there's a number of things that they say, one of them that they say hurts is experiencing an environment that they feel has discrimination and prejudice existing on their campus. One thing that really helps is when they say they feel close to an adult at school. And there's a lot of folks working very hard to make sure that students feel connected. But I heard various folks, Dr. Sarvas in particular, saying, "We're not reaching all the students that are most at risk." And so, we definitely see these folks as part of a larger strategy who could make a big difference, especially with the emphasis on reaching out to families, hopefully being people who are bilingual, bicultural, and really have experience and understand the realities of youth who are most likely to become involved in gangs, as well as working closely and forming those strong supportive bonds with their families. So, that's all for me. Just Communities is certainly here to support the district in terms, whether it's research or with programming for staff, students, and their families. Thank you very much.
Okay, Eduardo Que, followed by Jaclyn Inda, followed by Matt Sanchez.
Thank you. My name's Eduardo Que, I'm representing the Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse and Fighting Back, and I have sat at the table in the development of a lot of the strategies that are taking place. And we know in Santa Barbara, we're seeing some dynamics taking place with young people, and it's growing very quickly, where it's at critical mass at this point. So we know we need to do some things that are different. And the proposal to put the gang intervention specialists in place is an idea, and I think it's a good idea. But we can't lose sight that there are a lot of other kids that are in crisis at the same time, that there are a lot of kids that are on the fence, looking to see what's going to happen next. And that recruitment pool is right there. And you said, Ed Mills, eloquently, Dr. Sarvas, that the kids that were involved in the critical incidents in our community did not hit the radar scope of probation or law enforcement or the schools, we didn't know who these kids were at. And many times, as you send referrals to Teen Court from expulsions, these are kids that would not qualify for the program as they would be referred from probation, so we are seeing those gang members within the program and providing the interventions of parent services that go across the board. So all I'm saying and looking at the perspectives of introducing a gang structure to address our target populations that are going to school, we can look at a small group, or we also cannot lose sight of the larger pool of students that are also in need of services. Victims very quickly become agitators, and we need to keep that in mind. Because if they become victimized once, they become victimized twice, they become the bully the next day. So we need to really work on, one, providing the interventions at outreach to a greater mass of students, and where is the funding going to come to that and sustain it in the long term? So when we look at the strategy plan, let's look at the big picture of where that's going to go to, not only in what takes place in this year, but in the years to come, and where is the best impact for the dollar going to take place that's going to have the impact to make this happen? Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Jaclyn Inda, followed by Matt Sanchez, followed by Kate Smith.
Okay, so, my name is Jaclyn Inda, and I'm here to talk about the same thing that everybody else is talking about in this point, which is something that's really important. I work with a group called Esperanza in our community, it has about two-hundred-and-fifty-six parents and youth that are directly involved with gang violence in Santa Barbara. And the message that we've been learning about with talking with our community members in that level is that there's a lot of things that need to be addressed in the school. The very first step in looking at this program and looking at what you guys are offering is to really address the issue of how this is really going to impact the schools. If you're really looking at the school district taking a part in our community, how is this really going to improve the connection between the parents and the schools? And how is this directly going to connect our youth to the school system? We know that the school's doing a lot in trying to create these kind of programs to connect the community. But the reality is that our school connections with our families have been so far gone and so lost, that a program that creates outreach only connects those community members to more community programs, it doesn't directly link the education piece. So when you're looking at this program and you're talking about statistics, how are we really going to look at the statistics of this place, of this program, directly latched on to the improvement of our kids in our schools? All of our parents have said one thing, over and over again, "The school is there so that our kids can succeed. We give our kids of our community into the hands of our school district so that they become successful in their life." So if we create a program like this, how is this really going to create that improvement? How is this really going to connect that child or that particular youth to the school so that they could achieve and they can get their graduation, their diploma and everything else? We know that there's a lot of community agencies out there that have provided a lot of real good work, but the reality is that a lot of the kids that we speak to do directly connect with these programs, but are still continuing to do what they do out on the streets. And our parents are feeling that. So we need to implement these kind of programs, but we also need to keep the focus that if we're going to implement these programs, we need to do something else that also directly connects the kids with the school system itself, within the school. I know a lot of different examples. Santa Barbara High School has something called Dawn Riders. Dawn Riders is a bike club that directly connects the kids with a program within the school. So the kids are automatically feeling proud of something that they're doing within the school, which leads them to more success within their grades, to lead them with more success in the progress that they're doing. So one of the things that I'd like to mention is, if you're creating a program like this, don't forget of the real side of this. And that's to really make sure that our kids are going to be successful, and to really make sure that we're actually providing that implementation within these kind of programs that'll lead for the success of the kids within the program that we're providing in schools.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt Sanchez, followed by Kate Smith.
Hey, I'm Matt Sanchez, I want to thank the Dr. Sarvas and the board for you considering this. I too am socially liberal, but fiscally conservative, so I would, I don't mind that scaling down to make sure that something works. One thing, I'm here representing the kids that do want that help. And, yes, I want their success, but I want even more. I want more bang for the buck. I want to be able to help these guys, or whoever it is, to be able to help these guys so that they can help somebody else. It's not just making sure this student succeeds, but make sure that he makes, he's held accountable to somebody else to make sure that they succeed. And when that happens, like the AA, one alcoholic helps another alcoholic that helps another one, and now we have a whole bunch of different groups out there. It's the same thing, same principle, right here. You get saved from a life that could lead to destruction, you have nothing but gratitude, and you want to give back. I was saved, and that's what I want to do, and that's all I do. Some people say that they march to the beat of a different drummer, I'm one of those guys, you know? Some speak Martian, some speak Venetian, if you want to go that way, you know? All kids are important, we just going to, we need to be able to reach certain kids the way they learn, so that that light comes on, and when that light comes on, then the possibilities are unlimited. What we do today, or what we don't do today, will have an impact on our future. If we do something, it will have an impact. If we don't do something, it will have an impact. And I just wanted to share that with you. Thank you.
All right, Kate Smith.
I support the candidacy of Jaclyn Inda. The truancy program and the task force is institutionalized racism. The truancy program is criminalizing our children. I asked Dr. Sarvas at the candidate's orientation, "How do the children get to El Puente and La Cuesta? The breeding grounds of the gangs?" I had to ask him three times, because he replied with, "The quality of the school." Here's how the students get to El Puente and La Cuesta. If they fail three classes, or are truant, or they're expelled.
Ms. Smith, I'm sorry to interrupt you, and we'll make up the time, but I'm wondering if you could speak directly to the agenda item, which is the hiring of outreach specialists.
Okay. I am against this strategy, and I'm horrified that I would see members of the board shaking their head when you hear the police chief talking about suppression. Children learn what they live when they are faced with suppression, coercion, autocratic education, people that tell them what to do, not teach them how to do. People that punish them rather than help them understand the consequences of their actions. They will act out. Two people, maybe, I guess, a task force of ten organizations, a hundred people, millions of dollars, there will be gang violence in our schools. That's because children need to learn from the very beginning of their education how to communicate, cooperate, collaborate, and coordinate. And that's done in the school by methodologies that get them to learn how to problem-solve and resolve conflicts. They learn by doing it. By the time they're in junior high, with the way you're teaching them, it is too late to have two people running around trying to role-model.
Thirty seconds.
So, I want it, well, you did give the chief thirty, three minutes more, so, let's talk about the students and giving them engaged, interesting, relevant, and socially conscious education. Give me a part of the hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand dollars, and I'll go to the kids and see if they want to have hip-hop classes. See if they want to have a track for them to learn how to communicate and express themselves, not only in English, but in Spanish. I want to have the opportunity to help them become teachers, advocates, politicians, activists, lawyers.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
That's the end of public comment? That's the end of public comment. Okay. Do I hear comments? We are way over on this item, but I'd like to hear your comments. Yes, Dr. Noel.
Thank you, and I appreciate all of the comments by speakers and the hard work by Mr. Gonzalez. I have a lot of questions, little questions and big questions, but let me try to focus on the big ones. I don't understand the logic of asking us to approve a hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars of expenditures that are part of a large plan which we have yet to see, and I therefore really think that Mrs. Cordero's concern that maybe we ought to do this after the Friday meeting with the city council, when we hear that, would be more appropriate. And repeatedly, we have reference to this broader context within which we're spending this money, with all the things that are going to complement this money, the training and so on, but all this is vague talk, quite frankly put. I look as a trustee of the tax dollars that are devoted to education, and I look at this list on the back of the memo page that you presented, Mr. Gonzalez. I find seven, I find twelve bullets. I find seven, I find 12 bullets, 12 of which are things that the school district will basically be doing for other agencies in town rather than school, school activity proper or educational activity. And I don't see the, I don't see the match. I'm not saying that other agencies ought to match us dollar for dollar, but I think that there, that some kind of concern about what are our respective contributions is appropriate. I don't see, for example, and perhaps I've missed something here, but I'm told by the people whom, with whom I speak who seem knowledgeable about this problem, that it starts in fifth grade, sixth grade, if not even earlier than that. And I don't, I don't know whether you have a gang intervention specialist for each elementary school, but that raises the question, what about other school districts as well? Are they going to be coordinated into this program? Because we're a piece, we're being asked to be the central piece and to move first before we see how our piece fits with the other pieces. And it seems to me, systems move together. They don't have one move before the rest of the system is in place. So I'm troubled, I'm troubled by that. I have more, more concerns. One of them, I see something here that is, to me, structurally, this doesn't make sense. Maybe you can explain it to me. You say here that the outreach worker or the gang intervention specialist would be the eyes and ears at schools and on the street, providing school officials with information on potential gang conflicts and violence. And I think this is in the context of we, I think you said, "We don't know what's happening. We don't have predictive power." In my career studying international conflict, they called that the intelligence function. And I look and I say, "Wait a minute. Are we going to have these gang intervention specialists performing intelligence functions for us and at the same time expecting them to build outreach trusting relationships with kids?" I have a problem with that. I would never trust a snitch and I don't know any kid who would. Other bigger issues. I don't see, and I'm just, I just got a copy of the report that's on the internet from the city, so I haven't studied this task force report published in September 2008. Mrs. Harder says it was in a board brief. I apologize, I didn't see that in there. So that's part of that context. Maybe this answers all my questions, but I browsed through it and I'm not sure about that. But what I don't see in that, in that document and in the document you sent out, Dr. Sarvas, by email a couple of weeks ago, I don't see much community involvement. I see a lot of bureaucracy. I see public agencies, I see private agencies, nonprofits. I see, I remember that one document, it sort of had community rep like TBA. But I don't see real conversation going on with the community. And I just, I guess I'm convinced that that's an essential part and that you get ideas there that you do not get through the various bureaucratic or administrative perspectives that we, that these kinds of groups that have been assembled bring to the problem. And Ms. Enda brought one up, the Don Riders. We had an earlier conversation about that where she educated me about the Don Riders. That looks like a very effective program. Even nicer, it's a cost-effective program. It's very low cost and it's, and it seems to be doing things for kids that are keeping them from, out of gangs. She also mentioned in our conversation, dance, and I think someone else mentioned that, hip hop, dance, music, things that kids like, "I didn't know until she told me." Handball is really hot with the very target population we're trying to reach. Now, to connect the little ones to the big idea. The big idea here being that instead of devoting our resource so heavily toward interfacing kids with agencies, we should be devoting our, a big piece of our resource toward interfacing kids with things on our campuses. Why? Because, as we've heard from everyone, the kids have to connect with school. Maybe they connect with school because they're doing something that's a lot of fun after school, playing handball or riding lowrider bicycles. But it's at school and it's a connection with school and it's something to build on. And I, and I, and I thank Ms. Enda for that insight because I think it adds greatly to this conversation and it needs seriously to be addressed.
I guess that was...
I'm, I'm very concerned also...
I thought you had completed your comments.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mrs. Harder, or Mrs. Cordero, I, my handwriting is really bad and I have a lot of trouble reading it. The financial aspect of this, we're talking about funding this with carryover funds in categorical programs. That's, those are restricted programs that we can justify and, you know, like Title I money, I presume, pretty easy to justify that, at-risk kids and so on. But at the same time, apparently we're going to hear on Friday at the meeting with the city, how they want a five-year commitment. And so, and at least, you know, they taught us out at the university and I got taught because I tried the tactic and got caught at it all the time. Dean would say, "Don't try to back me into a long-term commitment." You know, with your, with your, with your short-term requests. This, this looks like a commitment that we have no idea where, how we're going to fund. And it seems to me that, that we should be, we should have it on the table and that we should have a long-range financial plan that goes with a comprehensive plan that is integrated with the city plan. Final comment. I'm convinced that kids who are connected with school, kids who are experiencing some success in school are not attracted to gangs. I just take that as axiomatic and perhaps that's wrong, but that's where I start. We're an educational institution and we're not doing a good job connecting kids to school. We don't offer meaningful career technical education for our, for these kids. And I haven't had, heard a discussion yet about this problem or the problem of underachievement or the problem of disadvantaged youth, whether it's in our urban areas or in our rural areas. I haven't heard a meaningful discussion yet about that that doesn't say that we must provide them with opportunities that are career-oriented. Now, that doesn't mean more ROP, more old vocab, that means something new. And you have been reading this, as I've been reading this, that means somehow meaningfully integrating a good, solid high school education with enough career training that they can sell it. It doesn't mean a couple of electives, it means lots of electives. It means probably a longer school day. We're not having that conversation. And we're, and yet we're putting, we're ready to pour a lot of money into this as a non-educational application. I'd like to see more balance between our genuine educational functions and this kind of quasi-social service, quasi-policing function. I'm not, I'm not against this function, but I'd like to see it in a more balanced, coherent program. Thank you, Madam President.
Ms. Parker.
Just a quick question to start off, Mr. Gonzalez. The summer program that served the 82 students this past summer, were the Santa Barbara School Districts, were we the lead agency on that or we just had an employee of...
We were a partner. And I'd like to share with you one comment. Again, it's not often that we get to speak with the board about everything staff is involved with. Dr. Noel, you've mentioned with great eloquence, the Don Riders. I need you to know that the co-sponsor of the Don Riders is a young woman named Alejandra Gutierrez, who was the person selected by our district as our contribution to the summer program. A lot of her training, a lot of her background, a lot of her connections, getting these high-risk kids to be connected to school immediately with summer school was a direct function of her experiences with the Don Riders. We are not working in isolation.
And she's a counselor at Santa Barbara High School?
No, she was actually a career technician at Santa Barbara High School.
Okay, so she's...
At the time.
Okay. I think everybody's raised some really good points here. Before our last meeting, I had not seen, and none of the board members had seen, the best practices document from the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention. And after getting that after our last meeting and reading it through, I realized that I would have given some pretty different feedback as part of that process because what I saw is that the community has been working on this project and they've been doing their assessment, but I don't see that we've been doing that within the school district itself. As we're talking about, we don't know how many gang fights we've been having, you know, that are specifically gang fights, we don't have those kinds of records, we don't know where problem areas may be. I mean, there's lots of things that we don't know. So I look at this and I think we're really still at number two here at the assessment phase. And we don't, as Dr. Noel says, I don't think I see a coherent overarching plan. This is a piece of a plan and we have so many great pieces. I mean, even from last January, when you put together the document of what do we do and how do we intervene? There's a lot of wonderful things that we do, but I haven't ever seen it all tied together and I haven't seen the assessment piece. And so my concern with this is that we're running with something where we don't, everything is still sort of in this, well, we'll, we'll figure out how we're going to evaluate, we'll assess after we hire, we'll figure out how we're going to train them. We may even renegotiate with CSCA and change the salary range. And it'll be part of the city plan, but the city doesn't have a final plan yet. And I'm just concerned that if we move forward right now, that we won't serve the students well because we don't have what we need to have in place. So that's a worry to me in this. I'm certainly very willing to go ahead and put, you know, reserve money aside for gang prevention, but when I think of a whole plan for a school district, as Dr. Noel was saying, you know, it goes down to the elementary level, we don't have an anti-gang, a specific anti-gang curriculum. We haven't put in place teacher-staff development. There's, there's so many pieces that are actually less expensive and probably faster to implement. I'm also really intrigued by what Mrs. Cordero was talking about, that I guess that they were talking about yesterday, the idea of contracting out, I mean, this really is a sort of a social services function, which we absolutely do in our schools, but we also do contract out for a lot of the things that we serve our students with. And it might give us some more flexibility and especially in the situation where I'm, there's so many, there's so many different bosses, supervisors that these people would have to serve. I'm just, those are my concerns as I look through this.
Ms. Cordero.
Well, I guess I want to first start by apologizing to members of Task Force that my initial comments have led to, much to my chagrin, to so much reservation about approving this, these positions. I, I absolutely think we should approve them. I'm prepared to do it tonight. I just thought that as part of our process, we should be making sure that we have the flexibility to continue to look at how's the, what is the best structure in which to implement this, whether it be through the district or whether it be through existing agencies. I personally don't think we should wait and one, I really, I'm really sorry that all of the board members couldn't have been at yesterday's meeting and probably other meetings prior to that as well, because I think one of the things that was said yesterday that really struck me was said by one of the caseworkers from the summer program that worked with the 82 students. And she pointed out that when they started, they weren't sure they had all the pieces in place. They weren't sure that they knew exactly how it was going to work out. And they weren't sure that they were doing everything, that they were going to do everything perfectly. But they were sure that they had to do something and they had to do it quick because we needed to get started. And one of the things she said was, "If we had waited until we had all the answers, we would have never done anything." One of the young men there who had also been a caseworker talked about a young man, the chief shared a story. This young man shared a story about a young man who was stopped by the police. He was one of these 82, he was out, he was stopped by the police. He said, he related that under normal circumstances, he, because of his background and his status at the time, that there would have, he would have automatically been basically taken to jail or to juvenile hall. But he, because of his work in the program this summer, he had sort of the fortitude to be able to speak up and say, "Wait a minute. I understand that what I'm doing is wrong. I understand that I've made, that I made a bad choice right here, but I want you to know that I'm really sincere and I'm working with this program and the agencies were a vital part of this. So I'm working with this program to do this, I'm working with this program to do this." He started listing all the things he was doing to the police officer. He said, "You can run my record, you can see that I do have a record, but you'll also see what I'm involved in now." He said, "The person you see in my record will not be, is not the same person that you see standing before you right now." And it was because of his work during the summer. For the amount of money that we're looking at right now, we're not going to have, we're not going to be able to adopt a comprehensive plan that's going to reach down to the elementary schools and even before to address this problem. But we have students in crisis right now in our high schools and junior highs that we can start to address. We can start to work with those students. I, I mean, I think all of us recognize that this one piece is, can absolutely not be our entire plan, but it can be our beginning and it can be something. There's the old story of the, you know, person who sees hundreds of starfish on the shore and starts throwing each one back and a person walks up to him and says, "You know, why are you even bothering to do that? It's not going to make any difference. There's so many, you know, most of them are going to die before you ever get them back in the water. So why even bother? It doesn't, it doesn't make a difference." And the person responds, "It made a difference to this one." I think we need to take that approach. We can make a difference to the ones who are in our school, who are in crisis right now, even if we're not reaching everybody. And I think, you know, I'm, I really regret that my initial comments were misconstrued to mean that we need to back away from this. I just, my, I wanted us to just maintain some flexibility with it. But I personally think we absolutely need to go forward and our students are relying on us to take this step because if we continue to debate over this initial step for more, for months and months and months, then we're going to have to look at the next step for another several months and look at the next step for another several months and it'll be a few years before we ever get a program in place. In the meantime, the students who are in crisis right now will be incarcerated. We owe them some immediate action, I think.
Ms. Cordero, as a result of your speaking, could you make a motion, please?
Just before you do that, can I ask a question?
Sure.
My question is this. I, I lean in the direction of Ms. Cordero. I would like to move forward with this, but I have some issues with the role that other agencies are going to play. And, you know, I raised my issues with the training piece. If we had a special meeting next week or if we put this on the agenda after that, after we had the chance to have a conversation face-to-face with city council to answer some of those questions, to put together a more complete picture, and I agree that we're not going to be able to put together a comprehensive program and yet we need to make some forward movement, would, would people want to get that kind of input before they, they made a decision?
Well, that would be fine.
I would.
Yeah, that would be fine, except that, do you want to do this, can we do this after this, the... Yeah, that would be fine, except that, do you want to do this, can we do this after the city council, the joint meeting? Is that possible to reconvene here, or?
When's our next meeting after, after Friday?
Two weeks from, yeah, two weeks from tonight. Which is also, we're getting further into the semester. I'm concerned about that.
I would like to make a motion that we postpone the decision on this until after we meet with the city council. And I think, I'm anticipating that we're going to want to have some discussions, not just there. That's a pretty formal.
Well, I was thinking, we'd have to come back here.
I know I'm meeting with Don Olson tomorrow, and I'll get, I'll get some help in my thinking on that. But I would think that, that if we postpone until our next, our next meeting, or if you want to have an earlier meeting, I have no problem with that. But I, I would like to move that we postpone until after the city council, joint meeting with the city council.
Do I hear a second?
Well, I'd be happy to second that. And for me, it wasn't so much anything that Mrs. Cordero said. It was really looking at the best practices model, which is not jump ahead, but go through a process. And if we do jump ahead as a board, then I hope we all understand that it's not a solution, and that we have to go through this process, or we will not be successful in the long run.
I think we agree on that. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to, I guess, since it wasn't exactly when, I'm not sure exactly when, but perhaps in two weeks.
It was going until after, was my phrase.
Yes, well, either another meeting or two weeks from now.
When we conclude with the city council on Friday afternoon, to come back here is not worthwhile. It's Friday afternoon. People want to participate in the conversation. I would be open to a special meeting on Tuesday with just this single item.
I won't be here, I'm sorry. It's our family vacation, but others may be.
Where does that put us? I was going to look for the date of when that is.
Sixteenth.
Kit, can I just speak to the motion?
Yes.
I intend to make a, well, I intend to vote against this motion and to, if it doesn't pass, to make a counter-motion. That, because I think we can accomplish very similar things by approving the funding for this position tonight, and directing our staff to continue the meetings that are going forward with Freda Razzo, with Ben Romo, and maybe others as well, to, to determine what is the best structure for this position to take on, and to bring that, to bring the structure, to bring the specific sort of description of how it's going to function back to us. But still give the, the district and sort of the community the confirmation that we are going to support these positions. So I think that we don't necessarily need to wait until Friday to approve this part of it. We, and we can go forward and come, and still come back to it.
Okay. So we have a motion to, it doesn't, well, we don't have a date for when this next meeting is, but to do it after the city council at some point. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
And it passes three to two, so we're going to have to figure out a time, whether it's next Tuesday without Dr. Noel, or two weeks from now.
Well, I would like to propose that we do it as soon as possible. And so next Tuesday, Friday before the board meeting, I mean, for, well, no, we're waiting for after the city council meeting. Friday afternoon, Monday, I would propose as soon as we possibly can. So I would like to move that we have the meeting no later than next Tuesday.
Do I hear a second on that? No, we don't have a second, so we'll just have to work this out. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We're a bit behind. I'm going to press on with E2, and then we'll take a break. So E2 is the approval of the Santa Barbara School District dress code.
We've discussed this a couple of times before. We believe that in talking to you about your concerns and talking to Libra Cassidy Whitmore, that we have those ironed out at this point. And Michael Gonzalez, once again, will make this presentation. No rest.
I'm going to, we're going to show the proposed dress code overhead, but let me share with you a comment prior to to reviewing the proposed dress code. The issue really has to do with can schools, can a district propose a school, a district-wide ban on gang clothing? We sought the opinions of our attorneys regarding that, and it's very clear that a district does not have the authority to produce a district-wide ban on gang clothing. What the law permits is a individual school, in conjunction with parents, students, staff, and law enforcement, to look at the individual circumstances in that school and put together a proposal of whatever clothes is associated with gangs, and present that to the board for their approval. So the law permits a school ban, but does not permit a district-wide ban. So I just want to clear that up. And what we're going to show you incorporates language that permits schools to, to make that happen. So, so here's the, here's the dress code that, that we're proposing. Number one, clean and neat dress. Students shall be neatly dressed. Show proper attention to personal cleanliness. All pants and shorts must be hemmed. Cut-off shorts are not permitted. Number two.
Excuse me, can I just ask one question? Is all of this then new, this one through five, or that's already in our present?
It's, yes, it's very much in place. The, really, the, the new part has to do with what I shared with you at the very beginning about language that permits a school to propose to the board a ban.
So nothing in here has been amended?
Do you want to move to the end?
Please, we're welcome to do that.
The top there.
Scroll up.
Right there.
Right here.
Number eight.
So, so here it goes. Gang-related apparel. When there is evidence of a gang presence that disrupts or threatens to disrupt school activities, the principal, staff, parents, and guardians may work with local enforcement, law enforcement, to establish a reasonable dress code which prohibits students from wearing gang-related apparel. The dress code must specifically list what clothing is defined and prohibited as gang-related apparel. Second paragraph, a gang-related apparel dress code is included as part of the school safety plan and must be presented to the board for approval. The board shall approve the dress code upon a determination that the dress code is necessary to protect the health, safety of schools' students. Any clothing, third paragraph, any clothing or apparel that a student or a group of students wear to identify themselves for the purposes of harassing, threatening, or intimidating others is not permitted while on district property or during school or district-sponsored activities. The consequences below are existing practice at this time.
Now, Chair, I have, I have one, one suggestion regarding paragraph eight. And that is, in the, the legal opinion that we received, it indicated that schools, as part of their safety plan, the dress code section of their safety plan, would need to revisit it on a frequent basis. And I'm wondering if we should include that in here, that I think that they mentioned at least a six-month, a minimum of a six-month interval, if not more frequently. But I'm wondering if we should include that in our board policy, that school administration needs to revisit the dress code portion of their safety plan at least once every six months.
I think that's very appropriate. As I've been meeting with principals and assistant principals in reviewing this proposed dress code, we have very clearly indicated to them their responsibility to review that at the end of one semester, as, as you've shared. Yes, it would be very appropriate to write this in. I will also share with you that our superintendent, very wisely, has suggested that once you approve this dress code, we have, as you may know, a board policy on dress code. And the very wise suggestion is that we embed this in the administrative regulations of that dress code.
Okay. Ms. Parker?
It's nice to have this sort of codified, because the reality is, is that pretty much all of our school sites have been sending kids home that are dressed in what they interpret as gang apparel, mostly along the lines of this is disrupting the school day, rather than, you know, something that's been written down in policy. So I think it's, it's good, good that we have this formalized. I have one suggestion on number four, going back to the older language, on shoes. Where it says shoes are required at all times. My suggestion would be that we change that to safe footwear is required at all times. Because I'm imagining scenarios with stilettos and other hazardous- safe footwear.
Steel-toed shoes?
No, I mean, something that a child will not be injured walking down the hall or running or whatever.
I'm sure there's other, anybody else have any other little pieces to those? I have one. Can I do? On number two, pants worn below the waist. Can it be worn well below the waist? I think a lot of people wear their pants bell bottoms or a little bit below. Can I just add the well below the waist? I don't know. It's just me.
Well, I think below the waist is a bit, is a bit restrictive. You know, I think the low-rise jeans are the popular style to wear right now.
So well below.
But I don't know, I, I don't know if I, if well below fits. The question that I had is, given the language under number eight, I'm interpreting as this is meaning that we do not have a gang apparel policy at this point, or dress code at this time. Because in order to have one, a school has to bring it forward and identify exactly what it is.
You are correct. You may recall that at the beginning of all this, the district, we did propose a district-wide ban. After discussions with the board and at board direction, we took it to council that clarified for us that we do not have the authority to create a district-wide ban. And so you are correct. An individual school will need to consult with its safe school committee and give you folks a proposal for banning such clothing at an individual school site.
So that, so when I hear that kids are being sent home for wearing gang clothing, that says to me that the schools are in violation of our own policy.
I'm, I just want to interject. This paragraph acknowledges that there may be an issue with gang-related clothing and gives schools the green light to create specific prohibitions.
Right. But if, but without it, I mean, until they do create those specific prohibitions, we don't have one.
However, I think that as it stands, district principals would always have the authority if they felt that you, you're doing, if you're wearing something that disrupts the educational day, they have the authority under Ed Code to-
Well, I'm just concerned, because it's my understanding that the, the, the legal decision that Mr. Gonzalez referenced was specifically intended to, to keep schools from just sort of blanketly imposing an anti-gang attire policy, that it has to be very specific what it is, and the school has to get it approved by the board.
You are correct. The education code is very clear about the process that is required for an individual school to ban gang-related clothing. On the other hand, I will share with you, as a former principal, that was not unusual for, for me, to speak with our assistant principals, or for me to speak with an individual student or a parent, and tell that youngster that his clothing had to be changed. There is, and it may have been violating the law, I grant you that. But as a principal, I always took the safety of students as my number-one concern. This very clearly sets out for principals and assistant principals and a school site what the procedure, the proper and legal procedure is to do what I sometimes apparently did that was not entirely lawful.
Right. And I, and I'm concerned, because as, I also share, as I've mentioned several times, I have several members of my own family who attend our district schools. So I'm also quite concerned about the safety of our students. But at the same time, I, I would be concerned as well if administrators are casually accepting that they're violating the law by doing something and continue to do it. My, my expectation would be that if a student is wearing some sort of clothing that creates a hazardous or a hazard on the campus, that it should fall under one of the items listed one through seven.
Correct.
And that a principal would, should not have to resort to calling, to identifying it as gang attire in order to address it with the student. That, that was where I was originally coming from. That if, if it's being labeled as gang attire, it's violating our policy. If it violates one of these other standards, then it's just violating the dress code. But it also comes back to number two about the oversized clothing, which means that that needs to be, and that's also maybe why the below-the-waist issue is more than just a minor issue. This is not a gang dress code. This has to be applied uniformly to all the students on campus. If it's only be applied to students who are perceived of as gang members, then I think it's unfair.
You are correct, and council was very clear that the application of these policies are for everyone.
I think the issue there is safety, that they can hide things.
Yeah, so well below, I think it's a nice addition.
Well, the issue for me is, I mean, the issue clearly is intended to be safety, but for me, the issue is also enforcement. Who, who is held to these standards and who is allowed to slip by?
There is so much discretion in all of these.
Yeah, and, and I don't, I, I'm concerned about that. Because when there's too much discretion, it gets targeted at very specific populations, and we all know that. And so it either needs to be uniform, or the schools need to come forward and ask for a gang attire policy.
Correct. I, at some point, you'll need to clarify if you want additional language added to number two, at whatever point you deem appropriate.
Well, I liked what Dr. Malikov suggested with the worn well below the waist and adding that well in there. But I think, Mr. Gonzalez, that you may be being a little too hard on yourself, because it also comes back to this first paragraph. It's been a while since I've looked at our existing policy on dress code. But as it says here, before it starts listing anything out, it says, district students are prohibited from wearing clothing that A. causes an actual distraction from or disturbance of any school activity and/or interferes with the participation of a student in school activity. And I think that that is what our administrators have been acting under when they see, and, and I hope, because I know you're absolutely right, Mrs. Cordero, that whatever we put in there, we have to make sure that our administrators are getting training, making, and looking at our statistics and who's getting sent home, so that we can all keep an eye on that. But as it stands, administrators need that sort of distraction, discretion, because there will be things outside these boundaries where they'll look at it and say, you know, it's not on this list, but what you are wearing is clearly hazardous or clearly disruptive. And so I think it's an important part of our policy.
I just want to raise one other issue that it's, it's really, I, it's not something I'm, I'm interested in trying to manage on school sites. But I hope that at least junior high principals have strategies for dealing with students who are defying the dress code without sending them home. PE, changing to PE clothes, putting on another T-shirt, turning a T-shirt inside out. I, I just hate the idea of a student losing- I, I just hate the idea of a student losing instructional time, probably because they know before they set foot in the school that they're wearing something that is, you know, defying rules.
My experience is they have clothes right there on campus, say, here's another T-shirt. But we'll go back to them, verify that.
I just want to comment on one last piece because it was the issue that I raised in our previous draft or previous policy. And it's been, it's been revised here. And so it's in number seven, where it says, "Students shall not wear clothing, jewelry, hairstyles, body art, or other personal effects with writing, insignia, or pictures which disrupt the educational process." So I am interpreting that to mean that shaved heads, the close-cropped hairstyle does not violate this policy because it does not have writing, insignia, or pictures. So that the, the hairstyle would have to have those things in it in order to violate the, the dress code.
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, we have a public comment first and then we'll, we can do a motion.
Kate Smith.
I'm just playing devil's advocate. It's my understanding that the gang uniform is a white T-shirt and dark pants. I want to mention that we have a school within our district and they have a uniform. And all children that go to the community academy come dressed in the same uniform, a white top and dark pants. And they all look the same. They aren't given the opportunity to choose their clothes in the morning, to wear clothes that express their preferences or comfort. I'd also like to look at that line, "District students are prohibited from wearing clothing that A. causes an actual distraction from or disturbance of any school activity." Correct me if I'm wrong. A piece of clothing cannot cause anything. It is our reaction to that clothing that is the problem. A piece of clothing, a shirt, a pair of pants, it cannot interfere with the participation of a student. What if the students get smart and decide that they're going to express their gang affinity with color? With the way it's worn? Backwards. In school, we used to have backwards day and we all came dressed with clothing backwards. We have cheerleaders going around in very short skirts, looking the same, and we appreciate them. And we rally behind them. So I'd just like us to think about the way we're confronting a very, very, very serious situation. In my opinion, we're not going to end up where we want to be. Thank you.
Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to move to approve the policy that we've just reviewed with the additions that board members have suggested.
So on two and then on four?
And the six-month on number eight.
I hear a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Passes four, one, with Ms. Cordero saying no.
Thank you.
And we'll take a break now for about 10 to...
Could we give a preview of what's ahead in the evening?
Or what's not ahead?
It's obvious to me that we will not get to any of the conference items tonight.
Which is too bad.
So we'll bring those back to the next meeting.
Okay. We're back on E3, approval of oh seven, oh eight fiscal year unaudited actuels. And if that weren't enough, there's another part to this, establishment of a certificated staffing reserve.
Well, we've been waiting, awaiting the end-of-year unaudited actuels and we have that report tonight. Eric Smith, our deputy superintendent, will deliver that report.
Thank you, Dr. Sarvis. Education Code, Section 42100, requires that the board approve the unaudited actuels by September 15th of the subsequent fiscal year that the budget was approved and adopted. The unaudited actuels represent one of the four significant milestones in the budget cycle for a school district. In some respect, it represents the end of one budget cycle and then the rebirth of another because, as you know, the beginning, the ending balance of the former budget becomes the beginning balance of this year's budget. We use estimates of our ending balances at the time of budget adoption. We look at both estimates of revenues and expense and ending fund balance. And we operate on those assumptions or projections until we close our books and the actuels are known. At this point in time, the unaudited actuels represent the revenue we received, the funds that we expended, and basically the disposition of the ending fund balance. Generally, we don't include assumptions with the unaudited actuels since we're dealing with knowns, we're not dealing with projections. So there's not a lot of narrative here. But I will walk you through some of the significant financial reports. And then we also need to have a discussion relative to the second part of the agenda item, which is the establishment of a certificated staffing reserve, which is something that School Services of California recommended. And we were basically hedging on it until we saw what the unaudited actuels looked like. So if you could turn your attention to page, page five. And you'll see that this is the typical SACS, which is the standardized account code structure format. In this particular instance, you're going to see the unaudited actuels for oh seven, oh eight on the left hand and then our adopted budget, oh eight, oh nine budget on the right-hand side. We're really calling your attention to the unaudited actuels because that's what we're dealing with. As you can see, when we look at the major object groupings for revenue, you can see that in totality, we received about $124,504,000 as you look at line five, which is total revenues. Is everybody tracking that? And you can see that for total expenditures, we had about $120,981,118. We had a significant surplus of revenues over expense. As you move down into the transfers, you can see that we've made transfers out, which look a little bit different than what you would normally see because we have a larger restricted amount of transfer out. And most of that was to deferred maintenance. And you remember, we used both a combination of one-time discretionary block grant and all redevelopment agency, which are both restricted resources, to make that transfer to deferred maintenance to basically shore up the ending fund balance on the unrestricted side. And then you will see other things such as uses, which is the $110,000, which we pay for unused site fees for our two unused surplus properties. And then you'll see the contributions. As you move on to page six, this is the line we always like to look at, which is E., which is the net increase or decrease in fund balance. And as you look over to the total fund, which is columns A plus B equals C, you'll see the net operational surplus in that year in oh seven, oh eight was $3,094,065. And what that does is that, top of the page, correct, row E. And what that does is, we'll talk about it, it was fairly close to our estimated actuels. And we'll have a breakdown that shows the variance, which is actually on this eight-and-a-half by 14. And if we move over, and here's a variance report that shows the difference between our estimated actuels and our unaudited actuels, basically how close were our guesses relative to how we came in. And then if you move over to the next set of columns, which really should be, you can see over the top, there's FGHIJK and there should be an LM and N, but it's not there. What that shows you is the variances between the unrestricted and the restricted and the total variance. And the thing I would like to point your attention to is if you move down, probably about two-thirds down the page to where you see a number of boldface numbers, you'll see one that's 808,000. That's what we increased our unrestricted fund balance over our estimated actuels. Eight hundred and three thousand, my eyesight's not that good at this time at night. So that's what we did in terms of increasing our unrestricted fund balance. The 200, or 2,112 is what we increased in restricted ending fund balance. So we did not do as good a job, once again, spending our restricted dollars. And you can see the math there is basically looking at, you know, a cross coming from left to right. And you can see that the increase in total fund balance is 2,009, which is the combination of the unrestricted and restricted. What we did in the right-hand margin was give you basically explanations relative to the variance on the unrestricted. We know the restricted was going to be an issue. We've, we've always had an issue there with not spending our restricted dollars, even though we made a concerted effort. The footnote, or the side notes basically deal with the variances on the unrestricted side. As you can see that on the revenue, we had higher MA revenue come in than we estimated. Our supplemental hourly programs were a little bit underbudgeted. We also had more lottery than we anticipated. And then we had other various and sundry adjustments in terms of the P-body administrative fees were actually, came in lower due to a new MOU. Then if you look at the expenditure side, I think Dr. Noel asked once, was the freeze effective? If you see, if you go to the 4,000s there and you see that credit of $336,000, what that shows you is that was not contemplated at the time of estimated actuels. And when we actually came in at actuels and closed our books, we actually had $336,000 less in expense than what we anticipated. Is everybody following that number there?
I'm sorry, can you show me the, or direct me to the 336,000 you said?
If you go to, let's go to column K.
I'm sorry. Oh, column K?
Go to column K, then go one column over, which should be L.
Yes. So it's, it's in the L...
With the brackets. It's 351,000.
Oh, 351?
Oh, I'm sorry, 336.
Okay.
I'm going to 351 next.
336,609.
That's correct.
That's one, okay.
And you can see if you move over to the, to the note on the side, it says lower for year-end due to freeze and spending implementation. Then as you move down to, go down that column, you see the 351,000. Basically, we did not have to contribute as much to Fund 71 or Fund 69, which is our retiree insurance fund and our self-insurance fund, as anticipated. The self-insurance fund, I was just talking to Patricia, we had a recovery from an excess carrier. What will happen is sometimes we'll have a claim and if it hits excess down the road, then the excess carrier has to pay the insurer and they have to pay us back. And we had that kind of a rebate or an adjustment against expenses. So a combination of those things basically resulted in the fact that we did not have to contribute as much to those funds. So if you look at the combination of those two big credits, you know, 330 and 350, that pretty much explains most of the $800,000 that we increased from the time of estimated actuels, which is budget adoption, to basically the time of closing our books. So I just wanted to point that out to you because I thought that was significant. So as we move back to page six, which is basically our ending fund balance in the SACS format, what you'll see is that if you go to object 9791, which was our beginning balance at the beginning of the July 107 year, and then what you're going to see is our adjusted beginning balance and our ending balance, which is 10,695, which is a result of our beginning balance plus the operational surplus, which is that net increase on line E. You'll see that basically the total balance now is the 10,695. And embedded in that is our 3% reserve, which is the 3,642. Then we have some designations that the board has either made during budget adoption or were proposing that you make, which is the 859,0940, and you see those broken out. That was the previous approval of the upgrade of the HP, the Pur's Golden Handshake, which incidentally is a worst-case scenario and we'll know, it'll probably be lower than that amount and we'll know that as of October 5th. And then what we're asking the board to do via this action is to establish a certificated staffing reserve. And we'll talk about that in a minute and the purpose of that. And then we have an undesignated ending balance of 6,840,000. So if you looked at that in totality, the reserve's approaching about 9% if you subtracted out those designations. So it's a significant contribution, or significant increase, even from where we thought we were at estimated actuels. I think we thought we'd be about 7.44%, 7.45, we're about 8.9. So as we move through the rest of the SACS report, and it would probably be useful if it wasn't upside down, this, this shows you basically the revenue and expenditure details within the unrestricted and restricted general fund. And I thought one of the other things that was significant was if you look at page eight under revenue limit sources, you know, we often have this discussion about basic aid and the inverse relationship between state aid and property taxes. And if you look at, a good example of that is if you look at the revenue limit sources and go down to the subtotal, and look at subtotal revenue limit sources, you'll see on the unaudited actuels, it's about 93,591 on one side and 92,425 on the adopted budget. But look at what's happening at state aid up in object 8011. On the unaudited actual size, it's 16,974. It's dropping on the budgeted side to 13,199, which tells you that your property taxes are continuing to increase, which is driving your state aid back down. And so that's an indicator that you're, continue to move toward basic aid. And as you know, if we broke this out between elementary and high, a large share of that would be in the elementary because of the basic aid, you know, property tax transfer to the charters. So we haven't done that analysis, but we'll continue to look at that. And I think the secondary district's still tracking relative to what our prior estimates were. If we go to the next page, which is page nine, and I'm just going to call out some things that I thought were significant. Obviously, federal revenue, the, you know, the big restricted there is Title I and all the title programs. You'll see other federal revenue on the unrestricted side, that 500,000 is probably mostly MA because that's the only unrestricted revenue we get from the feds. As we move to other state revenue, you'll see the current year apportionments for such things as, you know, the hourly instructional program, special ed master plan, economic impact aid. Class size reduction, K3 class size reduction is considered a unrestricted program, as is 912 class size reduction. So that's why they show up on the unrestricted side of the ledger. Lottery is both restricted and unrestricted, as you know. And you can see, we get the lion's share of lottery and unrestricted and we get an increment above a specific baseline in time for instructional materials lottery. We move to the next, the next page, which is page 11. It shows basically, the big ones there are supplemental counseling, instructional materials, school and library improvement. And that total for other state revenue is 21,468,000 roughly. We move to other local income, you know, the majority of that is leases and rentals and interest income, which would include our trans interest. We get some money from ROPs, like through inter-agency services, and that, that's reflected there. And if we look at total revenues for other local revenue, it's 6,494,900. But if you look at the total revenues, it reconciles back to the 124,504,181. On the expenditure side, as we talked about before, it's all in super, super summary format. Everything rolls up into major object groupings. So we can look at certificated teacher salaries, we can look at, you know, certificated supervisors and administrator salaries, and we can look at total certificated salaries of 62,928, total classified salaries of 18,755,000. Employee benefits, which would include STIRS, PURS, social security, health and welfare, unemployment, workers' comp, PURS reduction of about 19,135,000. Books and supplies, including restricted and unrestricted, of roughly 6 million. Services and other operating expenditures, which is insurance, utilities, legal audit, all those types of functions, about 13,536,000. Capital outlay, both... Capital outlay, both unrestricted and restricted, within the general fund, six hundred and ninety-two thousand eight hundred and eighty-five. And other outgo, which basically includes both our indirect and direct cost, and that's significant because as you know, the indirect cost works like a reduction against unrestricted expense. So it's basically a shift from restricted revenue over to the unrestricted side to benefit the unrestricted side for basically carrying the incidental cost of operating the programs, payroll, accounting, personnel, and that's reflected there. And so you can see, it works out to be a total reduction in unrestricted expenditures. So we like to think of it as revenue, but it's actually a credit against unrestricted expenditures. Then if we move to page eighteen, you'll see the, basically the contributions to other funds. You'll see to Fund fourteen, which is the deferred maintenance fund, five hundred and ninety-six, two ten, coming from restricted sources to the cafeteria fund, three hundred and seventy-two thousand. That was up from what we budgeted at estimated actuals. Total inner fund transfers out of one million eighteen thousand two hundred and ten. And then, as is customary, we have a breakdown of contributions in the Saks report on page nineteen, but we've also included a breakout that we've been doing at our reporting cycles, and that's on page one thirty-six, which shows you the contributions both within the fund, which is from the unrestricted resource, resource zero zero zero, to the restricted resources, as well as from the unrestricted resource zero 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 to other funds.
What page was that?
One thirty-six. It's at the last page. So as you can see, the first part, you'll see the resource code in the left-hand margin for community day school, which is resource twenty-four thirty. You can see that we made a contribution from the unrestricted general fund of a hundred and ninety-two six six eight. For special ed, and remember, special ed has several legs of funding, has a federal funding component, which is PL nine four one four two. It has a special ed, what used to be special ed master plan, which is now an AB six oh two entitlement, which is a state, and then it also has revenue limit transfers and other things like that. But you'll see that we have, we account for it where we show the actual contribution to the special ed funding component, and we made a three hundred and fifty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine contribution there. We made a four thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight contribution to a tolerance education grant. You can see the big contribution there is the special ed state funding, both in the elementary and secondary, for combined of five million eight hundred and seventy-four six oh one. So if you look at both the special ed state funding and the special ed federal funding, you will also recall that that amount was significantly higher before, and we made some significant reductions in reducing encroachment, and we're still working on that issue. You can see that we're making a ten thousand dollar contribution in each district at gate for combined of twenty thousand. Home-to-school transportation combined is three hundred and sixty-one thousand oh four eight, transportation for special ed. Sure.
It's an item I pulled on the consent agenda. The contract with the MTD, a hundred and seventy-some thousand dollars, is that in these numbers or is that separate?
That is a oh eight oh nine. You're looking at oh seven oh eight.
Oh.
Yeah, so two different issues.
Was there no contract with them?
We, yeah, it would be embedded in these numbers. That's correct, but.
Is it in the home-to-school transportation number?
Well, here's the issue, is that, I don't know if you could say it's in this number specifically, because we get an apportionment for home-to-school and special ed. So whether you want to say that funded it, or whether you want to say the encroachment funded it, you'd have to say the contract with MTD and our contract with STA basically outstripped our state's apportionment, and we had to make a contribution.
So this is the net effect?
That's the net effect.
That's what I wanted to know, thank you.
So special ed transportation, two hundred and eighty-two thousand three four four. Routine restricted maintenance, which basically is not a true encroachment, it's an obligation that we undertook in terms of receipt of state school facilities funds, where we would budget three percent. As you will probably recall, this number is probably less because we charged an indirect cost, which basically reduced the amount that we had to move over to the routine restricted maintenance. So if you looked at this number versus, let's say, second interim, it would probably be a lesser amount, although I don't have that off the top of my head, but I think it was.
And you say this was optional, and why did we do it?
It's not optional. If you participate in the state school facilities program, you're obligated to budget three percent of your total expenditures for twenty years after the last receipt of apportionment.
Thank you.
And then you can see that we've had, in some cases, we had school donations where basically we had to cover. Then if you get to, which, that doesn't make me happy, but, yeah. So in any event, then if we look at the separate funds, you can see that we made contributions, you know, to other funds, deferred maintenance, five hundred and ninety-six thousand two one zero, cafeteria fund, three hundred and seventy-two thousand, property and liability insurance, we made a contribution of fifty thousand.
And the cafeteria fund, that, that's higher than expected, right?
I think it was higher than expected. I think we thought.
I thought it was under two hundred.
I think, I want to say, I want to say two sixty-two is what kind of rings, but that could be the oh eight oh nine number, so I don't, I don't recall. It could be the, it could be the oh eight oh nine number. But I think that was higher than what we expected.
And, and what's.
But we think it'll be lower next year. We're making good progress there.
What's happening on bringing that down? So it's like down to zero?
Well, it won't be down to zero in one year, but we are working on a plan. And actually, I think we're going to have some good numbers, hopefully by first interim in terms of a number of things that Nancy has implemented. So that's the contributions, and I know the board is used to seeing both the variance report and the contributions, so I wanted to make sure that you saw both of those at unaudited actuals. The rest of the funds, I'd be more than happy to go through. They're not as exciting as the general fund, although I would like to have a discussion relative to the certificated staffing reserve. As you recall, School Services, you know, pointed out that specifically in declining enrollment districts, that, you know, if you end up having a bump in enrollment where you have to add staff, you're always operating in a declining enrollment district on the prior-year guarantee, which is basically the greater of current year or prior year P two ADA for your revenue limit. And so what happens is that you end up adding the staff in advance of your enrollment actually materializing, and so you eat the cost. So it's actually somewhat prudent to set aside a portion of the ending balance, if you have it, to basically hedge against that. And a good example of that is basically, I know we had this conversation before about whether all of homeschool Santa Barbara was basically being generated, you know, new income being generated from outside, and that's not the case. So there is a portion of cannibalization that happens there, where basically, after the first year, it's all embedded in our staffing calculations, but the first year there's like a little bit of a startup because we have to eat cost. Another good example is that, you know, we operate twenty to one K three. We don't always get twenty to one, and we have, you know, these, these singletons that are out there, and that creates havoc for us, and we have to make staffing adjustments, you know, for a few, you know, a few kids, rather than having the hardship of creating more combos or whatever. So it's good to have a staffing reserve to do those kinds of things, so we basically can have a contingency account, so when we have to deal with staffing issues, then we can go someplace rather than just basically have to eat it and it's unbudgeted, and then we have to basically make adjustments someplace else. So we think it's prudent, and something SSC's recommending, we're, we're basically just asking for four FTEs. We know we've been using a total comp figure of seven, eight thousand in the fiscal recovery plan, so we're asking that the board basically embed about three hundred and twelve thousand dollars, and if it's not used, it would just drop back into the ending balance. And that's kind of the theory behind it.
Couple of questions. That makes sense in that on page fourteen, it sounds, we went from fifty-two million, and now we're budgeting for oh eight oh nine here, fifty-one million. So even though costs went up, obviously, number of teachers has gone down quite a bit.
Yeah, I, I think there's a couple of issues. Another thing that occurred to me is that our projections relative to secondary were pretty much on, but we have this surge in the elementary, and then we've got this differential and credentialing requirements. So that's another, it's not like you just shift bodies over from the secondary district to the elementary. I mean, there's all these various issues that we need to grapple with. But yeah, I, there was a marked reduction, you know, in certificated staffing largely because of, you know, retirement incentives and basically leaves, and we didn't replace those people just like classified. So there was a, there is a significant reduction in force.
I had a quick question about the ending balance in terms of elementary versus secondary. Was it much different, or did you even look at that?
I, to tell you the truth, I have not done that analysis yet. You know, since we report combined.
We don't have to.
I, yeah.
Okay, it's Parker. Just a quick question on the certificated staffing reserve. This is something you're putting in for the oh seven oh eight, undesignated, putting it there, but it doesn't carry forward, or are you suggesting that we carry it forward?
It would carry forward if you approve it that way. What, since your ending balance becomes your beginning balance, if you approved it now, then we would just carry it forward, and then when we come back with revisions, most likely at the forty-five day revise, once we get a state budget, or at the first interim, whichever comes first, you, 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 you would see it sitting there. I mean, I, I think the other thing that we will want to do is that the forty-five day revise, which I'm hoping is before the first interim, is we'd like to do a multi-year at that point in time, because one of the issues that, that we need to be careful about, we've increased the ending balance substantially, but that's only one measure. We want to look at that on a multi-year basis, you know, and then try and make, you know, distinguish between what our ability to pay for things is on an ongoing versus, you know, one-time monies and things of that nature.
So if we put, if we vote for tonight?
It would carry forward.
It would, it would carry forward, but would it carry forward as, as like the salary of four?
Yes, if that's what you approve.
And that would, so we would see that in the out-years and revised versions of this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Until you told us not to do anything, you know, to not longer do, to no longer do it.
Any other questions?
I just had a, I just wondered if you could explain again how you determine the number four, the four FTEs.
Actually, you know, I looked at five, I looked at six, I just, I just thought it was a modest proposal, so. And, and you know, and frankly, the other thing that weighed on my mind is I know that, hey, I know homeschool Santa Barbara has four, you know, and I thought, okay, I know we're going to get new ADA out of them, but we're not going to get a hundred percent, and I know we have these other adjustments, and basically, I'm just, I, I thought it was a good number. You guys could go higher if you want.
We call that dead reckoning.
If we put this reserve into the budget, does that, well, maybe I'll, I'm sorry, maybe I'll withdraw that question. I'm going to, I'm going to open a whole can of worms that I don't want to go to right now.
I, I think my rationale was basically twofold. One is if we have an uptick in elementary, that's one. And the other issue is that, over time, if we have these various anomalies that are not enrollment-driven, where we don't get new revenue, it gives us some latitude to deal with those issues rather than just eating cost, because that's what we end up doing, is just eating the cost. And so what happens is when we look at that line E and we look at, you know, the amount of revenue over expense, that goes down because we ate cost someplace, and.
I would like to get you to just talk me through and reassure me about self-insurance funds and those kinds of funds that got us into trouble a year or so ago, where we found out sometime around this time of year, or a couple of months or so earlier, that we had to transfer about four hundred and some odd thousand dollars into these funds because they had negative balances.
Yeah, actually, when I looked at that history, which was, that probably was not an accurate reporting that you got, because what happened, that dealt with the, the portfolio loss transfer issue with Keenan. And so basically, I think you've seen some of the emails where the excess is going to actually pick up a significant amount of that. And I think Patricia and I were just talking about, you said there's five claimants left there? And we have the amount that was already identified by the excess carrier and working with our council, sitting in the general ledger, or which would essentially be the ending balance of those funds, reserved to deal with that. That's property and liability. Well, that's workers' comp, but old workers' comp, old workers' comp. Our new workers' comp, as you know, we're with CISC one, and they're a joint powers authority, and it's incumbent on them to do their own actuarial to make sure that they're fully funded, and you've seen that report.
For us, that's a fee, right?
Well, actually, it's a payroll rate, so what happens is that we pay them based on a rate per hundred dollars of payroll. It's embedded. When you look at, you know, the three thousands, if you go and look at page, I've got to go to the expenditure sides. Yeah, if you go to page fourteen and look at objects thirty-six oh one and thirty-six oh two, all programs that run personnel, they pay that rate per a hundred dollars of payroll. And so you can see in the unaudited actuals, on the oh seven oh eight, in objects thirty-six oh one and thirty-six oh two, we had a total premium cost, which is both unrestricted and restricted, of seven hundred and seventy-two thousand. You will recall, as part of the fiscal recovery plan, we had a significant rate reduction in comp, and if you carried that all the way over to the oh eight oh nine budget, you'll see that on, you know, that column F. So if you compared column F with column C, you would see the difference of five forty-five oh seven five versus seven seven two three two oh.
And the, the, so we're, we're okay, we have appropriate balances in, in all of those.
That's correct.
Kinds of funds.
That's correct.
All right, that's, that's something I always, I promised myself I would ask every year at this time.
And really, the issue with the portfolio, the portfolio loss is a residual issue. I, I just want to, I want to assure you that.
But there were, but there were other funds that were negative that were.
Yeah, and basically, all the funds, you know, if they were going to be negative, like cafeteria, we moved money into them, and that's what we just showed you.
There was kind of a double-dipping thing on reserves if you calculated with that, I remember, a potential, a potential. The other question is the unfunded liability for retirees, the GASP, forty-five.
We're still working on the actuary.
Where are we on that?
Is that Aon, who's still waiting on information there, Patricia? And does that have to come from Nick, or who's that have to come from? Okay.
I don't understand your answer.
We don't have it done because they're still waiting on, the actuary is still waiting on data from us, but we know it's on our radar and we need to get to it. So I'll, I'll put it up on my bulletin board.
So we're still not putting away money for that?
We're not putting money away for it.
Are we obliged to start doing that, or?
You're never obliged to do it, you're required to disclose, and actually, I think it's by the end of this fiscal year, a district of this size needs to disclose under forty-three and forty-five. There's no requirement to fund, so it's whether, it's a competing interest like anything else in the budget.
Yeah, but we've had people stand here telling us that it's prudent.
Well, I think a lot of people would have said it was prudent before this budget year, but I don't think a lot of them are saying the same thing relative to what the competing interests are.
Prudence is relative.
And that's exactly right. And, and, you know, budgeting's all about priorities, so.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you very much, I appreciate your answer.
You're welcome.
I'd like to move to approve the oh seven oh eight fiscal year unaudited actuals.
Second.
And we have public comment on this before we take a vote.
Yeah, and also, did you want to include in that the?
I would like to make two separate messages. Okay, all right.
Did I hear a second, by the way?
Yes, it was Dr. Noel.
Lane Wheeler, president of Santa Barbara Teachers Association. I would like to publicly recognize and thank Mr. Smith and his department for delivering an unaudited actual before September fifteenth, as promised, in a credible fashion that seems to be balanced and is understandable. And while I'm disappointed that he didn't find that box with five million dollars under his desk, because it would have made it easier to bargain, at least I believe we have a very true, realistic picture, financial picture of where our district is, so I'd like to commend the board for the wisdom to move forward in securing. is, so I'd like to commend the board for the wisdom to move forward in securing Mr. Smith's services, and I'd like to commend him for his leadership in his department and making sure that his folks are working in an efficient and timely manner to bring numbers back to us that allow us to know exactly what the financial health of our district is. So that'll cost you an extra twenty-five dollars, Mr. Smith, but we'll take care of that on the side, thank you very much.
I just want to say that in my time on the board, I've been waiting to hear a representative of the bargaining unit be able to say that to us, so I want to thank you, Mr. Smith, for, for making that happen, thank you.
I hear a motion and a second, all those in favor. Any opposed, passes five zero.
And then I'd like to move to establish a certificated staffing reserve of three hundred and twelve thousand dollars as part of this ending balance.
Second.
So that means that it would have to be done again for the next year?
It gets rolled forward, I mean, the issue is, is that if we use it, and we burn it down, but if it's still, I mean, you're going to have to look and make that decision probably every year, is what you're going to have to do, but it's something that.
Is this the way you want the motion worded, though, or would you prefer it just to say we're establishing a certificated staffing reserve of four FTEs?
Well, I, I guess there's, there's two ways you can look at it. You can look at it this way, that we're going to embed this in the ending balance, or you could look at it this way, where you could say, let's say all we, let's say we're down to a razor's edge, and you had to have the three percent, when now you're saying you're going to do whatever's necessary to get the three percent, plus three hundred and twelve thousand, whether that's cutting, raising revenue, so my original intention was just to embed it in the ending balance. I think that's consistent with school services, that California's recommendation.
Okay, so we keep this motion, it's fine. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, it passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we get to move on to, we have, yep, we have time. Gosh, we're all in. We're rolling, approval, the purchase of the tele-parent, tele-parent, sorry, a parent notification system, sounds funny.
Well, Davis Hayden spearheaded the evaluation of six parent call-out systems for notifying parents for student attendance, emergency alerts, school information, and I'll let him report on the results of that and the recommendation to you. Dr. Hayden is our Director of Research Evaluation and Technology.
Good evening. Yes, we did do that, we had six companies come in, and they, all but one of them were here personally, one did it by Webex, and we looked at them, we had about fifteen different people looking at these, principals, teachers, and district people, and we pretty much unanimously decided that tele-parent was the one that we liked the most, and was the best price. Now, there was maybe one or two that maybe were better in some regards, but super expensive, and tele-parent seemed to all around to be what we wanted. There was one other piece, too, that was really attractive to us, and that is that tele-parent has an additional part that schools can purchase, if they wish to, that's not on this, that it's going to be an individual thing for schools to pick up, which is a teacher-to-parent connection piece, and that is very attractive to some of our schools, and they're going to let us try that out for a one-month trial, any school who wants to try it can do a one-month trial, have, be evaluated by the school before they have to make a decision to purchase that. So that's what we went through, and I think Barbara can speak a lot more on why we need this and the emergency part of it. So what we're looking at here is the emergency part, we're looking at the attendance part, and we're looking at a messaging system that can be used to send messages to PE, to clubs, to academic teams, you know, tryouts are canceled, whatever we need to do, we can form hundreds of different groups that are already pre-established, and send messages out, and the messages get out within a few minutes of when they're sent. But anyway, here's Barbara, you want to talk about the emergency system?
We, one of the things that was really important to us is how quickly we could reach families in the event of an emergency, and that was definitely one of the criteria that we were weighing out with all of these vendors, and we were pleased that with tele-parent, we would be able to go to about ten thousand calls within a minute, and we would be able to use the information that's on the emergency cards, and if they have, say, a parent has a, a cellphone, one parent has a cellphone, the second parent, the other parent has a cellphone, we've got a home phone, we would be able to program about four or five numbers in, and if there were multiple children in that household, there would not be duplicative calls, so that was another important piece, but in order to reach, say, all of those numbers in an emergency, we would be looking at about anywhere from six to eight minutes, which is an awesome capability, we do not have that now in our, our system, and a lot of other schools and school districts are using systems like this, so we just wanted to make sure that we were, that was one of the important criteria that we were looking at.
That's overwhelming. Ms. Harder.
Actually, you answered a number of my questions about putting it to very specific uses, you know, other than, you know, broad-based call-outs. Here's the question. A lot of people don't have landlines, they just use cellphones, and a lot of people who are on restricted incomes by prepaid cellphones, so their telephone number's changing a lot. How do the schools keep up with it?
Well, most of, most of these companies, and this one too, allow you to have the parents choose to either not use their cellphone as the contact, or what, and so in emergencies, we would just go ahead and use anything that we can get to, but for the regular calls, they can opt out of this, of the cellphone, or we can just send it by email, or we can just use regular landline phones, so that's an option, and so for families who don't want to use the cellphone, they can turn it off.
No, I, I, it really has to do with schools being able to keep up with emergency numbers or whatever that parents, you know, give them, and then they change.
That's always an issue.
Constantly over the school year.
Well, there's another feature, all these companies, and this one too, allow you to, when you do a dial-out, you can check exactly what happened, was there a disconnect, was there a no-phone at that telephone number any longer, so we can get those reports, and we can actually.
Can you send those, then, reports back to, by school site?
Absolutely, so we can actually update in a much more efficient way that correct telephone numbers for all our students.
And there's no question that it would take some discussion on each of our school sites to educate parents, that it's really important that they keep those numbers current, and that would be something that we would definitely want the school sites to work on on an ongoing basis.
Ms. Querdero.
I have a very quick question, I think I know the answer, but I just want to verify it. At the, at the bottom of the, of the cover letter, about the component that would be optional, optional to purchase separately, it says that currently, teacher messages can be translated in twenty-five languages, but I don't see any mention of translation in the rest of it regarding the general program, so I'm hoping that it is available in Spanish, as well as any other languages that we might need to use.
Actually, tele-parent has given us a really nice pilot system that they're going to probably incorporate for the rest of the school districts, which is that they're going to let us call twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, if we need to have a message translated for emergencies into Spanish, they're going to have Spanish-language speakers available for us to translate it immediately into Spanish from English, if we don't have a Spanish speaker ourselves, so there will be always at least a Spanish translation always available.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm, in the section where I, where it says, the, the letter or the, the document focuses on that, but it says for emergency calls, so is it only available for emergency calls?
Yes, because if you don't have an emergency call, I believe we have language speakers in our district that can translate and, and do the, the messages in Spanish.
Okay.
Ms. Parker. I just have to say how thrilled I am that this is coming. I'm so excited, obviously, none of the elementary schools have this, and the secondary's, what they have is very slow, cumbersome, and limited, and I just feel like we are making a big step forward with this, I'm really excited. So one of my questions, I have three questions, one is how soon will this be implemented? Two is what about the training for the staff members? And my third question is how much does the teacher-parent component cost for the school sites?
Okay, we could probably implement this within a few weeks, if the board passes it. Two, they will provide training for, for free, I believe it's for free, and, but the system is quite easy to use, I mean, it really is not going to be that difficult, we'll, if we have to, we'll train the main people that are going to use it on the sites. The attendance part of it will be automatic, automatic, so it won't take a lot of training once it's set up, and the third part was?
The teacher, that extra cost?
It'll be an extra dollar fifty per student. For the teacher component, otherwise, it's a dollar eighty-five as part of the basic package, it would be a three-year contract, of which we could opt out at any point with no extra cost during that three years, so the price would be locked in at the dollar eighty-five per student during the three years.
Actually, I think it's a dollar seventy-five.
A dollar seventy-five for the student, the teacher-student? Sorry, the teacher-parent?
It's in, it's in your packet. Dollar seventy-five for the three-year contract.
Oh, that was the twelve-month I quoted you, sorry.
So that's the option two, is what?
Correct.
But that's for, if, but when you're saying a dollar seventy-five, that's per student, so each site would, it wouldn't be twenty-eight thousand, obviously, it's whatever each site number of students that they're paying for.
Well, right now, the district has picked up the school messenger, and that would, we're thinking that the district would pick, pick this up for the emergency, the schools would pick it up for each school if they're going to do the extra.
That little extra one, and, but for the schools, that one little extra piece would cost them a dollar seventy-five?
A dollar fifty per student.
A dollar fifty per student, that's, okay.
A dollar seventy-five is for the emergency and the attendance components.
Okay.
And the call-outs for messages.
Great. I'd like to move to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, it passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
E five, third reading and approval of Board Policy and Administrative Regulation, one three one two point one.
The board's seen this policy a couple of times, we're bringing the final wording back to you, so you have one final look at it.
I have a, are you going to say something first?
I, I think that the revisions that you suggested have been incorporated in both the Board Policy and Administrative Regulation, and we'll entertain any questions that you might have.
I've got a really short question on page one of one, it says, the last sentence there, the district will not investigate anonymous complaints unless it so desires, is the "it" the district, or the board, or the superintendent, who is, what is the "it"?
In this case, the district is the superintendent and/or his designees.
Okay.
My quick question is on the AR, at the end of number three, it says complaints related to the superintendent shall be initially filed in writing with the board, but then it never really refers to if there is a problem with the superintendent. You know, I, I thought sort of maybe at step seven, there might need to be something where it says both a complaint and employee against you, and the complaint was made, may appeal a decision by the principal or immediate supervisor to the superintendent or designee, or in the case of the superintendent, it can be, I guess, just appealed to the board? Or is that superfluous?
The complaint wouldn't be made to the board, then appealed to the board, the complaint would be made to the board, and the board's decision would be final.
Well, should it then say complaints related to the board, to the superintendent shall be initially filed in writing with the board, and the board's decision will be final there?
It could, it could say that, yes.
Does that make some sense? I know we have a speaker, but before we have the speaker, I'll make a motion to approve with that addition.
Second. Do you mind if we make the addition, the change the "it" to superintendent or designee in that?
Sure, is that okay?
Okay.
Kate Smith?
A complaint procedure is fundamental to our democratic society, it has to be lead to conflict resolution. This is a wild goose chase. Now, the bad news is, ten years ago, I filed with the California Department of Education a compliance complaint, I hope you're listening, because this is what you're supposed to do when you have a complaint, you go, you can go to the state, and they came back and they said, you're right, Mrs. Smith, they do not, they gave you a bad personnel complaint procedure, and they directed you, ten years ago, to come up with a procedure to resolve conflicts. It's basic to our democracy, there are laws, educational codes, and regulations, and a complaint is a violation, an alleged violation of those laws, codes, and regulations. This makes no reference to anything, and it does not offer any mediating factor. Two people have a disagreement over something that is supposed to be on the books, a way of doing it, someone alleges a violation, there has to be a mediating factor. You start out by saying, the superintendent shall determine whether a complaint should be considered, wrong, that's subjective, should be considered a complaint, and whether it should be resolved by the district's process. That's what you start out your complaint procedure with, that he's going to decide whether it's a, it's valid, or if we have a process, and yet, at the end, you're allowing a wild goose chase, he's going to go back, he'll be the appeal body, and it says, parties should consider and accept, no, I'm sorry, due process means that there is an alleged violation of a specific law, and there's a mediating factor that decides which side is right.
Thirty seconds?
You do not know the Hughes bill, it is governing child abuse, striking, that's what happened to my child, striking the child. You have the word concerns, to resolve concerns, a concern is not a complaint, unless, we're talking about what you mentioned before, concerns about, you said vegetables being cooked long enough, that's not what the people are coming to the board and the administration for justice. Well, there's a lot more to say, you've, in number six, you say, shall attempt to resolve, you are stating right then and there that this is not a conflict resolution document, it is not a procedure, it is not process, which is due the people.
Thank you.
I, I'd like to note that we do have other complaint procedures, and they are specifically related to alleged violations of specific laws, the Uniform Complaint Procedure is one, the Williams Settlement Complaint Procedure is another, they're both in Board Policy.
Thank you. We also have Mr. Lane Wheeler.
Thank you again, and just as a point of clarification, we do have contract language that's, that mirrors this particular policy, however, in our contract language, a complaint that's filed must be, must be identified to the person filing the complaint by name. I've read through this quickly a couple of times, and I possibly could be missing it, but it does not indicate any place in this prop, a particular administrative regulation, that the person lodging the complaint needs to identify themselves, and I don't want us to be in conflict with contract and with administrative regulation, so I would ask you to clarify that before you vote in one way or the other. Anonymous complaints cannot go forward in the complaint process, they have to be identified to a specific individual or individuals, and then the process, the process can move into action. Other than that, I, I believe this policy seems to be complete, so if you could address that, I would appreciate it if it is to remain an anonymous. If it is to remain an anonymous complaint, I would ask you to reject this. Thank you very much.
I think the common sense of the document indicates that it's not anonymous complaints. It specifically refers to prohibiting retaliation, which means that the person's been, the complainant's been identified, and it specifically refers to what the superintendent's options with regard to anonymous complaints.
Or even number one, where they have to communicate.
Right.
It would be hard to communicate if it was anonymous.
But it does say, "The district will not investigate anonymous complaints unless it so desires."
Right.
So it does suggest that it could desire to investigate anonymous complaint.
And then I would assume that it would not be related to an employee in that sense, but I think, I think it makes sense to clarify that under number five. So you might read, A, the full name of each employee involved, B, the name of the complainant, and then shift numbers B and C down. Would you accept and amend a motion that changes, includes that?
Was there a second to that motion? I didn't hear it. Ms. Hall?
Which motion?
Oh, okay.
To approve this policy.
To approve the policy? Okay. And so Ms. Cordiero, is that okay if we change that to, the B to the full name of the complaint?
The complainant.
Complainant.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we mean.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay, so we've got the motion and the second been revised. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes...
No.
Oh, sorry, I did that so fast. It passes four-one with Dr. Noel saying no.
Thank you.
Thank you. We obviously don't have time for the rest of the agenda, so we will put that on later, but we do have a lot to come back to here, so let's go back to the beginning.
Would you like to note that it's past ten-thirty?
Yeah, but we're not entering into any, we're not doing anything new. We're just doing the, going back, right? I think that's okay. So, D-two.
D-two, I have a question about Title I Professional Development. Funds for educational services. I can't tell on the basis of this whether that's an appropriate use of Title I funds or not, but I had a related question. Do we have any kind of running, there's still a rule about how much, about the percentage of Title I money that may be used for non-direct services to students, is that correct?
That's correct, and...
Do we know where we stand when I look at this? How do I know whether this is pushing that, over that line, or...
I can tell you that as a program improvement district, the elementary district is required to use ten percent of our allotment on professional development. It's a separate code, you know, for the Title I. This is exactly what this is, and these are our two teachers on special assignment. And this particular called, it's called CASFEP for the initials there, is the conference in California to go to hear the very latest from Title I and all of our other fund, our...
There's no amount here, how much money are we talking about? None of these have an amount.
Hmm, good question, and I don't, I don't have that at the top of my head. I signed off on the forms, but...
That'll be in the future, it'd be nice if we had it around.
It would absolutely, it usually is in there.
Yeah, I know.
Yes, right. Would you like me to follow up?
As soon as you said, well, it was four on the table.
It says at the top that if it's...
But the other comment was really directed at Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith, how do we have a running tally when we get, when we get these Title I or Title II expenditures? How do we, it is our responsibility ultimately to make sure we're not overspending for non-direct services, but we have no way of knowing where we are.
Actually, when I build the budget, particularly around this piece, the ten percent, I, I know exactly this code at the end's ten-twenty-four, I check that all the time to make sure that the money that we have in there is split accurately.
We also look at, you know, things like Title I carryover, and, you know, we're only, we can only carry over fifteen percent, and at year-end close, we make sure, you know, there's cross-checks, because we don't want to give any money back, so.
Well, I appreciate, because I really like to monitor a little bit what's going on with the funds.
Can I move to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes five-zero. Uh, D-five.
I have questions there, too. Logan Hopper, twenty-five thousand dollars. Measure V, I-98, and the general fund. I know who Logan Hopper is. I didn't realize we paid him consulting fee.
As part of our lawsuit settlement, we're obligated to pay him a consultant fee every year for his monitoring and updating the plaintiffs. And he does that every year. Every year, our lists get shorter, and as soon as he signs off on all the schools, his services will no longer be required.
When will that be?
Hopefully, within the next fiscal year.
Okay. So we've spent, as a result of that settlement, now we must have been, we've spent at least a hundred thousand or more on him, huh?
Yes. He prepared the transition plan, and then he's the person that both parties agreed to in the lawsuit, to monitor the plan, do the reporting. He makes site visits, he inspects the schools to make sure that what we've told him is accurate and that it was done correctly.
Okay. All right, that answers that question.
Bob, while you're up in that section, would you also note that just above that, Educational Networks is the bring-back item?
Yeah, I did note that, and since it was exactly what I wanted, I said, "I'm going to remain silent about that." But if you want me to reward, you know, compliment you and commend you for bringing that back and making it clear.
I just wanted to note that it has been brought back with an appropriate funding source.
I note that, and I commend you. Down farther, Staff Technology Support Title I. Mark, Teresa Marks? Same question, slightly different twist, but is that, is that appropriate Title I money? It doesn't look like, on the surface of things, although I could imagine that Michael's going to get up there and show me how that we interpret it as the entitled one, because he's read it a lot more carefully than I am. But I would like to ask that anyway. And then...
It may not be.
Well, I can actually address that, because she's, she's an Adams staff person.
Yes.
And she is working with supporting teachers, she's classified with fifth and sixth graders, teaching them PowerPoint, and sort of computer lab issues.
Okay, and that's a, that's a school-wide, that's a school-wide program, school, no problem, and thank you very much. Erin Shank, physical education teacher, time release and EIA, and I have a little trouble making a connection between EIA and physical education teacher on the surface of it. Maybe Mrs. Parker knows about that one, too.
That one I don't know.
I do know that Harding School, as well as a few, many of our schools and elementary have specialized teachers that come in and they teach the kids while the teachers are collaborating, and that's the release part. And so what they're working on is looking at student work and ident, you know, looking at the students at risk, and I'm assuming that's the EIA portion of that, is what they're really working on.
EIA is about language, right?
It can be about our English learners, where at Harding School, there are many.
Mostly, at least what I've read.
And so those are the students they're looking at. So I'm sure that's the rationalization.
Last line, Abby Vasquez, Curriculum Facilitator, District Office, Title II.
Yes. That, Abby and Jennifer...
Ten grand, that's not a small amount of money.
No, it's not. It's based on hours over and above, she's one of our teachers on special assignment. And so she and Jennifer Gibson, doesn't appear on here at this time, I don't believe.
So they're on special assignment, they're out working with coaching and things like that?
They are, from their, for their regular teaching, or their regular position is as an ELD, teacher on special assignment. This curriculum facilitator stipend is over and above that, because they're working under Dr. White and doing all kinds of other curriculum work after they're finished with the other, for instance, our adoptions, working on the report card, training teachers, they're doing, working with teachers.
This is about training, about helping other teachers?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. I move to adopt that.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I just want to note the retirements, there are seven of them. They're all classified, and it amounts to over a hundred and fifty years of service to the district. I'm assuming that in some part, it's because of the golden handshake, that there are so many at this point. Does that make sense?
In large part, yes.
I had D-nine, and Mr. Smith answered that, my question about transportation, so I'm ready to...
Well, I had D-seven was the next one.
Somebody had D-seven in there.
I don't have D-nine, I have D-seven.
D-nine was the one that got pulled.
D-seven, yeah, that was me.
You mean D-seven?
D-seven, I had D-seven. We don't need that anymore. I move to adopt D-seven.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes five-zero. And the next one's D-fifteen, it's harder.
No, I think I asked to pull...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Fifteen and sixteen, and they both kind of addressed the same question, there's a change order, which amounts to about seventy-five thousand dollars if we combine the two of them. And I'm just one, I was just wondering, in, in fifteen, it had to do with, I'm double checking, fifteen was the one where it was shifting the...
The deep end for the shallow end?
And, oh, I'm sorry, the part that I had the question about was removing existing failed asphalt, which was seventeen thousand dollars of this, which says failed asphalt. And I guess, my question was, was that asphalt that was already existing there that was our responsibility, or was that asphalt that they put in that was their responsibility?
No. This was existing asphalt, I would say it is the east side of the pool where the basketball courts were outside of the pool area. That asphalt was not in the best of shape when the project started. The contractor did his best to protect it, and once he removed the dirt from on top, the asphalt was, was in a state after being driven on by equipment that it needed to be replaced. That was change order fifteen, the contractor gave us a proposal, and it was a good number. Then on change order sixteen, we start to replace the asphalt, we'll pull the asphalt out, we expect to find base material under there that we can recompact and use. We start recompacting, we find out that we have extremely wet soil underneath. We can't compact it, and without compacting, in the future, it would, we'd get some undulation and movement, like you see in roads sometime with traffic, you get, start getting unevenness. So what we did was, we had the contractor remove the soil, store it onsite, let it dry, and then put it back, and then compact it, rather than hauling it away and bringing in new soil.
And that totaled fifty thousand dollars? Wow, okay, okay.
All, all time and materials substantiated by the onsite inspector.
Okay.
Move to approve, fifteen and sixteen.
Fifteen and sixteen, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes five-zero, and I think that's all the, the extra ones. And so we're at the end, coming events, board comments and correspondence, future agenda items, we do have all these coming back, but I also want to ask about board goal, we did the mission statement, but whether we want to come back and talk about the board goals, or whether we want to leave that for a little later, in terms of after, perhaps after the election, something that's for new board members right then and there, or do we want to sort of take them on before then? So I'm, I'm asking.
There was a timing issue involved, as I recall, and I think October put it sort of in this, in the sweet spot for timing. And, you know, I won't offer an opinion about whether we should defer it or not.
I don't think that we can wait. I think that in order for it to be part of our annual cycle, it needs to be something that happens in October or November. And obviously, the new board won't start till December, and that really couldn't possibly get into the meat of things until January, which is far too late.
We currently have it on the list, I believe, for early October.
And I, rather than my deciding that, since I am not going to be here after December, I felt like I needed to put that out here, so that's where I'm at.
We are still a full board, as it is.
Yes, I realize that.
What was your reasoning why we must do this before the new board's here? Were setting goals for the district?
It's, it's the goals, our, our time schedule was that that's when we do it for the fall...
Who ordained the, this time schedule for those goals?
Oh, this just goes back a little bit, but you're right, I was not...
It was a board discussion.
Well, didn't we all, didn't we all agree on, agree to it?
Yes.
I can't remember if it was when you were away during the summer, Dr. Noel, but it was, it was something that we talked about, because to make it part of driving the way the budget is formed for the next year, we need to have our focus goals in place in the fall, so that as they're discussing, how can we meet these goals for the next year's budget, that process is starting in January.
Well, let me tell you, I'll certainly try, you can go ahead and do it, but I would, I would certainly, one of my first acts, since I will be on the board, as will you, will be to make a motion that we review it all with the new board members. I may not have enough votes to have that motion carried, but it seems to be the only appropriate way to proceed.
I think that that's an excellent idea, and I would hope that we would do that regardless.
You'll give me a second for that motion, then, won't you?
I absolutely will.
I have another future agenda item, it should be a very brief discussion, and that is that the CSBA annual meeting is at the beginning of December. As a board, we do not have a tradition of attending that meeting, although I've attended many of those meetings. But they offer a new board member institute the day before. There's some expense involved, not a big expense, but I still think that we should have the discussions surrounding the expense.
It was, I found it very worthwhile, that...
Well, we can debate those merits, too, but I think that we should put it on an agenda.
That sounds good, thank you.
Anything else?
Well, I just wondered if we were, if we could set the meeting time now for when we, we voted to delay our discussion about the outreach positions, can we determine when our meeting will take place?
Okay, um...
I actually have a suggestion.
Yes, please.
Since next week won't work, what if we have, we begin a public session at 6:00 PM at our, our next regular board meeting, and make that six o'clock time certain for that discussion?
Can I just ask, is next week out, or is only Tuesday of next week out?
Dr. Noel? You're out all week? I can't answer that. I don't have my schedule.
Well, do you want to propose a different day, a Thursday or something, or...
No, I...
Oh, he's out, okay.
Yeah.
So, so two weeks, does that work for everybody to do the six o'clock? Do I see some head shaking?
I mean, I assume it determines what our...
Two weeks, yes. Do I hear head shaking? Okay.
Well, I mean, what is our close session schedule going to be like?
We don't, I don't know that right now, I don't...
Well, it'll probably be about an hour and a half.
So that would mean we'd be starting our meeting at four-thirty?
Well, why don't we just plan to limit it to one hour, whatever we can get done in one hour, so we'll start at five o'clock.
Or start the public session at six-thirty and take care of some other business with a seven o'clock time certain. I'm just trying to throw out ideas that make, maximize the number of members of the public who could be here.
I think it would, even if it's part of our regular meeting, I think that's fine, as long as we don't end up spending half our meeting on it. I think it's fine.
We work it out with the other side.
Yeah, I think it'll be, we'll work out something. Okay. If you have anything else, and otherwise, this...
Well, we have a, we have a meeting this Friday at one-thirty.
Okay. Over at the city?
Is that here?
No.
No.
In the ABR?
Right.
Okay.